Good morning. Want to welcome all to the March 8, 2022, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. And it's great to be back in the chambers and certainly to see all the folks that are with us, the staff and members of the public and others, presenters, here this morning. And so with that, being our first meeting back, and we're going to make some announcements here, and I believe, are we still doing call-in as well? And you're going to make those announcements. So Flo and our county executive have been working really diligently over the last several weeks, as we've done these virtually, but to prepare for today. And again, a day when we're back in session in the chambers, but also obviously still going to accommodate folks from use of the phones. So with that, again, welcome. And I'm going to turn to our clerk to read a number of announcements into the record, and then I'll follow on with a couple of announcements, and then we'll get into the morning's business.
Good morning, supervisors. Let me establish the quorum for you, please. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Everybody made it.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, March 11 at 6:00 PM on Channel 14.
Okay. Thank you for that. And if, I'll ask Ann Edwards, please lead us in, and pledge to leave us this morning. Thanks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair Natoli, I'll read the meeting announcement.
Yes, please do.
The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In compliance with directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the meeting will be livestreamed and open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing of face coverings, mask, or shield is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. To make a public comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500, and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call to be placed in queue to make your public comment. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. The clerk will transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. Members of the public will be given three minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see the clerk's staff or assistants, or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or at boardclerk@saccounty.net. You can also send written comments via email. And finally, if you are here in person, just fill out a speaker slip form at the back table with clerk's staff, and she will get that over to the chairperson, and he will call your name at the time that it's ready for you to speak, and you'll just come down to the podium. And you do not have to include your name if you want to remain private and anonymous, that's fine. But if you could come down to the podium and at least announce the item that you're speaking for. And that concludes my notes.
Okay. And thank you, Flo. And again, thank you to you and to Ann Edwards and your respective staffs for working on our agenda. And we've done a little reordering as well. We're going to start our meetings off with public comments that are not on the agenda, and it's actually listed on the agenda, and we'll do that as a first-order business. Then we'll go to consent calendar. But also make note, again, recognizing that some of our earlier meetings went very lengthy, to say the least, and would note that if we have consent items that need to have further discussion or questions, we're going to hold those over to 2:00, as we had done for a number of years as a matter of practice. So, but if there are just comments or short discussions, we can leave those on the consent calendar for the morning. But otherwise, in order to try to manage the agenda in a way that's comfortable for all involved and not invoice some long delays, we're going to attempt to do it that way. So with that, then, Madam Chair, let's go ahead, I mean, Madam Clerk, we'll go ahead and go to our first item, which is public comments on matters not on the published agenda. We do have a couple of folks in chambers. Do we have folks on the phone as well?
We have quite a bit of folks on the phone.
Off agenda?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, let's take those that are in chambers here first, and then we'll go to the phones. So first, off-agenda speaker is Blanca Hurtado. Blanca? And that'll be followed by Davi Rodriguez will be next. Yeah, right there. Yeah. Standing between them, and it should pick you up, and you'll be in stereo.
Good morning, everybody. So my comment is about what's happening in the world lately. This is about VAERS. It's not on the agenda. And VAERS is a system which tracks adverse reactions to vaccines and also deaths. And I just want to share why I'm passionate about it. This is just one report. Five-year-old female, following information, vaginal hemorrhage, medically significant, is bleeding out of her vagina. She has never had this issue before the vaccine. The five-year-old female was vaccinated 14 January 2022. Last week, nine pages of side effects and adverse reactions from the injections came out. And we still have many of you and the county doctor pushing the injections. You need to be removed from any and all leadership if you continue this behavior. In addition, 8,817 COVID vaccine injuries were reported to the CDC among kids of ages 5 to 11. That study shows Pfizer vaccine only 12% effective in that age group.
Absolutely scientifically clear that these vaccines do not prevent acquisition of the disease. SARS-CoV-2 does not prevent transmission of the disease, does not prevent illness from the disease, and does not prevent death from the disease. And in fact, in studies, the all-cause mortality rates have been shown now to be higher in numerous studies than those who've received the vaccine than those who have not. So it does not prevent transmission. Those who have gotten the shots can acquire and transmit at equal volumes. University of Wisconsin, University of California, Vietnam, multiple studies affirming this scientifically, peer-reviewed data.
Mechanistically, he's basically talked about it's from IGA. Secretory IGA is the most abundant antibody in our body, and it does not get stimulated from any of these vaccines. This is a respiratory virus. Secretory IGA is in the respiratory system, and that's one of the main reasons why vaccinated people actually keep harboring more virus.
Thank you for your time, and I hope I planted some seeds for you guys to do your own research instead of just going by whatever people are telling you, including myself. Don't believe me. Look it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Blanca. Okay. Next, we have Davi Rodriguez. Davi? Davi, you're up. Yes. This is on the off-agenda item.
Do you want to use the overhead, Davi? Did you want to use the overhead to portray the picture? I have to apologize. I'm losing my hearing, and I'd probably be deaf before the year's out. It's getting worse every day.
Okay. We can assist you there. Okay. Go ahead, Davi.
Yeah. This is a relative of ours. He's turned up missing. He's officially a missing person, walked or drove away from his house almost 100 days ago. And we've been looking for him nonstop, trying to get the word out to neighborhoods and anybody that might be hanging around bingo parlors that he frequented and stuff like that. His name is Francisco Taquenco, goes by Frank. He's my wife's uncle. And it's a very odd case of disappearance. He has not been getting the publicity that some have, and so I'm trying to get the word out. And I also wanted to give, use this opportunity to give a word of caution to everybody. When you go missing, you become this non-person, and you're entering this purgatorial state in which you can't do for yourself, but your relatives can't do for you either. The law prevents it in some cases. In some cases, you know, it's private enterprise that does it. But she has a power of attorney, and they've failed to recognize this just about everywhere I go. The bank, any government agency, smud, they just don't want you doing anything for them. And so consequently, the vultures are moving in, you know, because his bills aren't getting paid, things like that. And so you need to have that hammered out in addition to your will, which she has, you know, but he's not dead. So, and take consideration of that, because if you go missing, and I've learned from this, I'm updating all my stuff to give to her, give her extreme power of attorney, whatever she needs, because, you know, like I say, you're a non-person at this point. Anyway, we've asked for help from the Sheriff's Department, and we're not really getting that. So I use this opportunity just to see if we get this word out.
Okay. Okay, Davi. And good luck on that. So we hope.
I'm sorry. I can't hear you.
Good luck. Hopefully, we're able to, he turns up. Hopefully, he's found.
This barriers.
Okay.
Oh, okay. And what about the other item? Is that going to come up later?
Yes. Yes. I'll call him. Item 19. He has another item.
Follow up at the next time.
Okay. Thank you, Davi, and hopefully get the word out. Okay, next, Sheriff Castaneda.
Good morning.
Good morning, members of the Board. I'm here again today because there's some crucial information that we need to discuss and brought to the attention. Multiple attempts have been made over the past year and a half to demand an evidentiary hearing with Dr. Olivia Casari. Her recommendations had a huge impact on the people of Sacramento County, including myself. There are things that were not valid, that claims she made that were half-truths. There was misrepresentation of data that was given to us to prolong the state of emergency so they, so you guys and them could continue to collect federal funding. That's fraud, okay? And your guys' actions helped cause a lot of pain and suffering for the people of Sacramento County, not to mention the multiple children that will have adverse reactions to the injections you guys all recommended for them. My biggest concern is you guys are denying the evidentiary hearing when there's no lawful reason to be doing so. We have a right as the people to question her, to bring her forward, and demand an explanation for the claims that she made. A year and a half, you guys, we've been asking for this. We have a right, the people have a right to question her choices, the medical advice and information she claimed. If it's valid, she should have no problem explaining that, bringing the data forward. Because what I'm telling you, what a lot of the people of Sacramento are telling you guys over and over again, is there was no validity to her claim to prolong the state of emergency for Sacramento County. It was unlawful. Forcing me to suffocate myself to come and speak before you guys was unlawful. Forcing my children to suffocate themselves just to go to public education was unlawful. And it's all based off of the false state of emergency that was prolonged so you guys can obtain all those hundreds of thousands of dollars of federal pandemic money. And that is fraud, okay? I'm not here to threaten you guys today. I'm tired of that. We're a team. Let's fix Sacramento. Let's get our kids the help they need. Who knows what permanent brain damage has been done to those children for suffocating themselves for the last year, okay? My baby, facial recognition, that's critical to her development. Who knows the damage that's been done to the children? Who knows the damage that's going to continue to be done if we don't bring the evidence to the light? It is time. We demand an evidentiary hearing. I'm being terminated from my job, Mr. Desmond. You know why? Because I have natural immunity. In December, the FDA acknowledged natural immunity is equivalent to vaccination, if not superior. I am being terminated. For 15 years, I've served the state of California as a public servant. I'm being terminated because I spoke out about what I seen. The genetic information is being collected on the test swabs, people's DNA. It's being given to domestic terrorists and foreign terrorists for biological warfare. It's time you guys start listening to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Okay. And those are the in-chamber, off-agenda speakers. Oh, wait, one more? Okay. We need to get that to the clerk. If you could do that quickly then, please. And then we have folks on the phone as well, so.
Should I come forward?
Yeah, you can come. Just bring it forward. That's fine. Yeah. Just, you can hand it to the clerk. Thanks.
I have some documents to give you guys.
Okay. Just hand them to the clerk there. Whoop, careful.
Is this for all of Board members?
Good morning. Before you is our response to your denial of the right to have an evidentiary hearing, public hearing, to expose truth. It is imperative that Dr. Casari and Dr. Aragon show evidence why they're putting forth these mandates when they know or reasonably should know that people are dying and being maimed by these so-called vaccines. Also included is a copy of Pfizer's Worldwide Report of Adverse Events through February 28, 2021. There are nine pages of adverse events to this so-called safe and effective vaccine. I don't know how much more willfully negligent you can get than sending the FDA a document that says there's 3% mortality rate and huge, huge percentages of people with adverse reactions. Our concern regarding the safety and efficacy of the mask and vaccines are of grave public concern. Mrs. Travis, an attorney for the county, you are not only an attorney for, you are a public officer. The county of Sacramento is your clients you are merely managers for. We, the people, thus, are your ultimate clients. The Board of Supervisors is merely managers for the people's business. You, Ms. Travis, are failing to act competently in representing the county taxpayers or public interest by allowing some county actors to condone the suppression of truth. It is your duty to tell us as your clients the proper avenue by which we have, we can have this public hearing. Each day you continue to support this, you are aiding and abetting the death rate that's going on. Be advised, Lisa Travis, you are acting under the color of Office of County Council, and by condoning the negligent acts of Dr. Casari, Dr. Aragon, and the Board collectively, you are committing malfeasance. Be advised, Dr. Casari, as a Sacramento Public Health Officer, you have a duty as a medical officer to fully inform we, the people, the risks and benefits of the masks and so-called vaccines on ourselves and our children. More specifically, by withholding vital information regarding the health risks of these masks and vaccines, we are going after your license because you have violated your Hippocratic oath to do no harm. If what we're saying about these vaccines and masking is true, wouldn't you all be charged for pushing this misinformation? You would be accessories to medical malpractice, murder, and/or manslaughter. We, the people, need to look at this. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Okay, that's all the in-chamber, off-agenda speakers I have. We have folks who signed up on some other consent items. We'll get to those in a moment. We do have folks on the phone, and so we'll go to those. Madam Clerk?
Yeah. Please transfer the first caller. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hello. My name is Christine Bailey, and I am a resident of County District 3. I'm calling, well, first of all, I want to thank you for your work. You have a very hard job. I am calling to urge you to redirect $25 million of the recently allocated ARPA money to extend Project Room Key and to provide additional funding to the SARA program. Funding for these programs is needed immediately so that more vulnerable Sacramentoans do not become homeless than out on the streets. 90% of the 333 current residents of Project Room Key are elderly or chronically ill. The SARA program has only been able to support 11,000 of the 30,000 applications. So funding for this urgent care, I think, could be taken from the $5 million carve-out recently allocated to each of the five supervisors, and I urge you to do this. It's just the right thing to do for these most vulnerable Sacramento families. And I also urge you to use equity data mapping tools in conjunction with qualitative data from community listening sessions to make future funding decisions. Thank you, and thank you for your work. Take care. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Christine.
Next caller. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hello?
Hi. Can you start with your comments? You have three minutes.
Yes. My name is Brenda Olafene, and I am calling to urge the council members not to get rid of Project Room Key. I just ask that they think if it was them, would they want that done to them? That's my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brenda.
Next caller, please. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, indeed.
Okay. You can start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Oh, thank you. Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Deacon David Barnetts from Westminster Presbyterian Church here in Sacramento. I'm the current chair of the Social Justice Action Ministry, and the first priority of that ministry is an end to homelessness in Sacramento and the world. Calling specifically to talk about the Project Room Key closure of motel rooms. Seems obvious we could use the ARP funds to end the closure concept. It's increasingly frustrating to see how little attention is going to the homeless crisis, and how, how much kind of backlash and pushback we're experiencing from people who don't find it a high priority. I read the Mayor's Master Plan. I know about the 20 sites. Been talking to Katie Valenzuela about the inaction and how there are 20 sites and no safe grounds. For me, I'm Christian, believe in Jesus, and I'm centered on, you know, what would Jesus do? And I'm pretty darn sure that he would be leading the parade to end homelessness here and everywhere. And starting in Sacramento, we should be a model for the rest of the country on how the problem can be solved. The Master Plan, if put into effect, would do so in a very short period of time. And if all we're talking about is money, it's just a matter of money, we just can't afford it, well then, frankly, I don't think you know what Christianity is all about. You have to make sacrifices in order to do the good and do the right. And time is now. The more postponing, the more committee meetings, it's been decided. We have a path to end homelessness beginning in Sacramento. And if we can do it here, we can be a model for the, let's just shoot for the rest of California. We should lead this country to an end to homelessness. It's an obscenity. It's a shame on our nation. And if we don't take this seriously now, then we've failed. And Christian churches have failed as well. Every Christian church should be leading the parade to end homelessness, whatever it takes. I mean, we should have a telethon for homelessness, bring in enough money to say, we got the money, let's just spend it. Let's end this. No more discussions, no more equivocating, no more avoiding, no more adjusting. Let's do what must be done. It's a matter of conscience. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Deacon Barnes.
All right. Next caller. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Robert Copeland. I live in Midtown Sacramento. I belong to a couple organizations called Sacramento Homeless Organized Committee and Sacramento Tenant Union. I believe we should extend Project Room Key using ARPA funds to reduce people that are on the street, and also for the SARA program. I think you should go to the county, state, and federal government and ask for more money if you can't fund it yourselves. Because more people are going to become homeless because of that they can't pay their rent right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Robert.
You're welcome.
Next caller, please. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Liz Blum. I'm with DeCarceate, Sacramento. I'm calling because I'm extremely concerned that the county is planning to cancel the Project Room Key program, which has been providing temporary housing to hundreds of people throughout the pandemic. And the COVID-19 pandemic is continuing to impact our community and remains especially concerning for individuals who have pre-existing conditions, which is the population that will be impacted by these proposed mass evictions. 51% are older than 55, and 39% have chronic health conditions. Over the past two years, individuals in Project Room Key were never supported in accessing IDs, which are required to even attempt to access county housing programs. People have nowhere else to go if they are evicted, nowhere else but the public spaces where our unhoused neighbors continue to be criminalized simply for trying to survive, and then end up arrested and in jail under the types of laws that have been used for over 100 years to disappear people deemed vagrant by those in power. We can and must do better for the growing number of our community members who are trying to survive. We must recognize that our decisions, our decisions here on a local level are reflective of national priorities. We live in one of the most wealthy countries in the world with the worst inequality. And this is perpetuated when we don't use our ample public dollars to support those most in need in our community. The Board of Supervisors has the power and the moral responsibility to use ARPA funding to continue this program while also building more long-term solutions. Housing was number one on the ARPA community survey priorities, and yet it is not being reflected as the number one priority in actual ARPA spending so far. Our community needs this federal funding to be used in a way that directly impacts lives, and this is your opportunity to prevent mass evictions of hundreds of people. This is your chance to ensure that this funding has a powerful impact. Please take immediate action today and redirect your unallocated $25 million in ARPA funding to sustain Project Room Key. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
Next caller, please. And I just want to let you know that we have about 12 callers in queue.
Okay.
Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes. We're on hold. Okay, so caller, if you can hear me, just call back, please, and I'll see if staff can get them back. Hello?
Hello?
Oh, hi, it's your turn to talk. Can you start now? You have three minutes. We were on hold waiting for you.
No, I'm sorry. Hold on.
I hope you can hear us because we can call you back if we need, well, they hung up. All right, can you send the next caller, and I'll have staff call them back? Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Board. My name is Mason Taylor, and I work with Public Health Advocates on the California COVID Justice Initiative. I live in Sacramento's District One. Supervisor Serna, shout out to you. I moved furniture with you years ago when I was an AmeriCorps member, and we are repurposing the old Fruit Ridge Elementary School into what's now the Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative. I really looked up to your leadership then, and I hope that the Board together will do the right thing now. As soon as March 15th, hundreds of vulnerable older adults will be forced back onto the streets by the closures of Project Room Key hotels. These folks are overwhelmingly of advanced age and have pre-existing conditions, the reason that they were triaged for this shelter in the first place. This project has successfully housed 174 residents, and 80 more are expected to exit into housing. The Sacramento Emergency Rental Assistance Program, or SARA, received over 30,000 applications for aid, and the program has only had the capacity to serve 11,400 of them. So there is demonstrated need, and these are two programs that have demonstrated success rates. Advocates in Sacramento are wondering why, at a time when the whole state is converging on the issues of homelessness prevention and increasing affordable housing, the county would turn their backs on this opportunity to continue funding projects that already have the infrastructure in place to save lives and prevent more people from falling into homelessness. Currently, the Board is sitting on $25 million in ARP funds for district-specific projects that have yet to be released to the public, though the pandemic did not affect every district in the same way. Additionally, the recent Sacramento County Grand Jury report reminds residents that the county misappropriated at least $104.2 million in CARES Act funding that was meant for pandemic response. Instead, it funded the regular operating budget of the sheriff's office. Today, we are asking that you maintain Project Room Key, bolster funding for the SARA program, and message to the public how and when this body intends on reinvesting the $104.2 million that was subtracted from the budget in 2020 and filled with pandemic response dollars, and prioritizing the second tranche of ARP funding coming in May or June, the long-term recovery and repair that the community is owed, which in this county means building safe, permanent, and affordable housing. I also want to update the Board that the advocacy letter sent yesterday now has garnered 169 community signatures, and 12 organizations have signed on. Thank you for your time, and we put our trust in your leadership to be looking out for the most vulnerable in Sacramento.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes. And then if you could mute the meeting in the background while you're talking.
I also want to update the Board that the advocacy letter sent yesterday now has garnered 169.
Okay, can you hear me?
Hello?
Yeah, can you mute the meeting in the background before you start talking?
Yes, okay. So do you want me to go now?
Yeah, and then you have three minutes.
Okay, so my name is Diane Wolf, and I am also calling in support of continuing Project Room Key. You know, 300 people have relearned how to live indoors, and you're about to force them to learn how to live outdoors again. You know, if we haven't been able to house these people, we need to figure out why, and the county and the city need to come up with the answers to what are we missing? What do we have to do differently to house these people? And I would suggest to you that anyone in this group who is on social security, that those are people who have contributed to our economy, they've contributed to our community, and if we don't provide housing for them, we're failing them. We're failing the most vulnerable members of our community, and we're failing to provide that safety net that social security has promised. So I'm joining with the other callers in pleading with you to use the ARP funds to keep open Project Room Key until you're able to house all of these people and until you understand why they haven't been housed, what the next steps are, and to urge you to recognize that as a county and as a city, we are failing our, that part of our population that supports the rest of us. Instead of building housing for those people who run our city, we're allowing the developers to build housing only for the people in the upper economic echelons and leaving behind all of the people that we're really dependent on. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Diane.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hello, everyone. Good morning to you. My name is Fiza Mughal, and I live in District Five, Rancho Cordova. I'd like to say that last year, the Board of Supervisors committed to and adopted a resolution promoting racial equity, and I'm very glad and I'm proud that you all did that. Saying that, I need to hold you guys to a couple of things that are in the vein of racial equity, and I would really like to see a stronger commitment to racial equity. For instance, right now, there's a community-led campaign for the Board discussing important funding matters like ARP to pay attention to certain aspects, and there's something that I would like to highlight in the community demands that I extremely am in favor of, and that is to use equity metrics to make data-informed decisions when we're dealing with emergency funding or large chunks of government or federal funding. That's very important, that funds go to the people who need them most. So our dedication to equity should show out in instances like that. Secondly, it's recently come to light that the former chief of RCPD, who was also the Sac County Sheriff's East Division Commander, Kate Adams, had circulated a very racist meme among other people, staff in the sheriff's department, and she just got to go away, and that was never really handled. My understanding is there was an investigation that had begun, but then never really concluded. It just went away with her so-called early retirement, and I'm very disappointed in that. I would like to urge you all to support us, residents like me, Black Moms like me, in having the investigation reopened and seeing it through. Who else received this racist meme and did not report it? And just to give you an idea, it is a public comment I sent in in written format. You all have it. It's the only one with an image included, and in the image, there's a caption, and it says, "Go be a nigger somewhere else." And in the caption, there's an adult white male pulling the trigger of his hose nozzle and shooting a three-year-old, about a three-year-old, little black boy in the back of the head full stream, you know? And it just evokes the picture of an execution, the use of a hose on a black person. I mean, that takes me back to the civil rights era and what was done to the Black protesters, and it's really disgusting. And that somebody in a public safety position and leadership position can do that and not be investigated, and anyone that supported that or received that didn't report it is not investigated, and those people are out in my community, makes me feel unsafe with my public safety service provider. I really need you guys to back up your commitment to equity and protecting communities like mine. And please, 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 push for further investigation of this matter and see it all the way through and report the findings to our community because we're very much concerned. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, caller.
Goodbye.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Board and others. This is Nikki Jones in the Sacramento Homeless Organizing Committee, as well as Decarcerate Sacramento, and we're with some other folks, and, you know, here to encourage the Board. I know we've been in correspondence with some of y'all, and of course, for many months now over this issue, urging y'all to make sure these folks aren't left back out on the street. And I feel like, you know, the last time this issue came up to the Board, most recently, when it was, you know, the drawdown was mapped out and y'all approved it, was really disappointing because the conversation was so much different than the last time, because this has come to the Board before, and the decision to continue funding, it has happened, and it happened with these clear concerns and conditions that y'all voiced around, okay, we don't want to return these people to the street until we have these clear pathways to housing, where we're not returning people to a lesser situation than they're presently in, we need to keep this open. And so for it to just come back and be closed down without any attempts to fund it alternatively was really disappointing. And I think we need to really look at overall, what's our, what is our, you know, we have piecemeal funding here, here, let's throw some navigators over here, here, let's do this. What is our comprehensive plan to end homelessness? And it's like a buzzword. It's been around for, gosh, 20 years, and I know there have been advocates like Sacramento Act and others that have been really pushing hard for this comprehensive plan to end homelessness. But truly, when you look at the county closing these 300 units and no equal, you know, permanent housing pipeline on the other end, it shows a lack of comprehensive planning. It shows, you know, it shows a service resistance from the county. We always like to throw that idea on individuals, but look, here are 300 people in services, and you're ready to put them back out. And I can tell you that the pipeline is the problem, you know, that there is a problem beyond it. Access to longer-term housing is hard to come by, and anyone, if anyone is working with folks in Project Room Key, they can tell you that, but anyone working on housing with an individual or groups of individuals can tell you that, and I'm sure your county staff could tell you that. And so if you know that pipeline is the problem, focusing on working on that pipeline while you have those people there is the best possible solution, and putting these people back out should just truly not even be an option. We need to really invest in what keeps people healthy. Like other people have mentioned, these folks are elderly, these folks have chronic conditions, and this kind of, the plan that I heard at the last meeting was just woefully insufficient and did not by any means make clear that these people weren't returning to the street. And I think it would be hard to, yeah, I can finish up, yeah. That there's, yeah, that making the choice to not fund this program is making the choice to put these people back on the street, and I really need to ask y'all to not do that and to make a different choice, to make this happen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Nikki.
All right, next caller. We're down to about six callers now. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Kathleen Williams. I'm a constituent of Phil Serna's, and I'm calling to oppose the closure of the last three motels in the Project Room Key campaign, and I'm calling on the county to use ARP funds to continue to fund these motel stays. The reason that I think this is important is threefold. One, there is no place for these homeless residents to go. The county and the city, well, mostly the city, are relying on police management of encampments, and it's a futile and wasteful exercise since it just forces people to move at great trauma and hardship. So it's not a viable strategy. The second reason is that these folks are vulnerable, and the current status of the encampments in terms of COVID is very severe. My husband and myself actually got COVID because we visited a camp of unhoused residents. So it is not a safe environment. The COVID crisis continues among this very destitute population. But the third reason is the most important, and that is that the folks that are in the motels are largely elderly, they are disabled, many are ill, they are very vulnerable, and it is a death sentence to send them out into the streets. This is a very, very high priority, and we believe that these motel stays must continue and must help stabilize this part of our unhoused population while we work on housing alternatives. So that's my comment. I beg of you not to close these motels. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Hi caller, you have three minutes. Can you please mute the meeting in the background?
Oh, yeah, there we go.
Okay, and then.
Can you still hear me?
Yes, and then you have three minutes.
Okay, great. Yes, this is, sorry about that. I apologize. Just trying to get the, all the systems to work here. Yeah, so, hello, my name is Eric Nelson, and I'm an organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation Sacramento branch. Today is International Women's Day, and it's important that we remember that women and children are among our homeless neighbors. I'm calling to urge the Board to direct ARP, our funds, to Project Room Key and SARA program and other measures outlined in a letter sent by a coalition of community organizers. Project Room Key has successfully housed 174 residents, and 80 more are expected to exit into housing. Of course, these are many stats that everybody else has listed, but this is where we are. Supervisor Desmond also validated its success in February 9th board meeting. Considering the state's focus on homelessness prevention and increasing the availability and access to affordable housing, funding Project Room Key represents a crucial opportunity to work in tandem with statewide goals. SARA has received over 30,000 applications for aid and has only been able to support about 11,400 of those requests. Additional funding is required right now to begin processing the additional requests and keep people in stable housing conditions. Getting at the root of this issue of homelessness, it is caused by gentrification, which is a policy choice by government officials that seek to build luxury, high-rent housing that benefits private capital while driving up the cost of housing for everybody living in the community. This, of course, will displace numerous people as they no longer can afford to pay rent, and several of these people will end up homeless. This is a fact. The only solution to this developing, the only solution to this is developing robust housing, public housing that is well-funded and maintained and operated for a nonprofit motive and not operated for a profit motive. We live in a society and community, and as such, we have a moral and ethical responsibility to lift up and support the most disenfranchised in our community, especially those displaced by the greed of corporations and the current economic system. A clear path to end homelessness would be to, one, set up an infrastructure that first provides housing to those in need, regardless of their people, of the people's circumstances, then provide health services so people can become healthy and stable in community, and lastly, provide training and education to people in order for them to actually have the resources they need to enter and operate independent in our society. You all have a golden opportunity to help thousands of people in our community with millions of dollars in funding. This could be a moral, this could be a model for the rest of the nation. We implore you to act in a decisive and just way to meet the needs of the community and not kick this can down the road anymore. We urge the Board to consider these measures to prioritize the most vulnerable members of our community. Again, Eric Nelson with the Party for Socialism and Liberation Sacramento branch. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Chair Natoli, Supervisor Serna, and other current members. My name is Duke Cooney, and I live in District Two here in South Sacramento. I'm also a candidate for supervisor to represent this district. I'm calling in today to ask you to do the right thing. Extend Project Room Key to support those who are on the brink of homelessness. We have seen our neighbors and friends lose everything during this pandemic. We need a housing support system that works. Currently, the county has no regional plan to combat. Currently, the county has no regional plan to combat homelessness and increasingly relies on the surrounding cities to support our housing needs. Now is the time to be bold and use COVID-19 relief funds to support not only Project Room Key, but also the Sacramento Emergency Rental Assistance Program, a program which received over 30,000 applications for aid, but has only been able to support a third of those. We need solutions now. And if you don't feel up to the challenge, let the next generation step forward to do what it takes. I'm tired of being in a place where we have to ask our elected officials to do the right thing. And that's why I've stepped forward in addition to other community members. Again, my name is Duke Cooney. Thank you.
Thank you, Duke. Thanks.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Dr. Philip Summers. I am a resident of District 1 and I'm also calling in support of Project Room Key. And from my perspective, working in some of our local emergency departments as well as the addiction clinics where I work, Project Room Key has been a source of respite and enormous stability for a lot of patients during this time. It's been a very unique opportunity to give people a bridge to more permanent housing. And I think we have, we are at risk of kind of squandering some of these gains, these public health gains that we've achieved by providing people with this, this sense of support. I know that, you know, this is not a long-term solution, but this funding, this ARPA funding is, you know, theoretically available for this and I can't imagine a better use of these funds. We don't have a backup plan for these people and putting them out on the streets, these vulnerable people, is really, is really unconscionable. And I, and I hope that we can find a way to continue to provide these people shelter and bridge them into more permanent solutions for housing. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dr. Summers.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. This is Mackenzie Wilson. I'm the community organizer for Decarcerate Sacramento as well as the community organizer for the Sacramento Tenants Union. I call today concerned and having to again raise the alarm about decisions that county staff and county are making around its constituents. I find it extremely problematic that we're talking about closing Project Room Key when we actually don't have enough housing. I bring backstory of the fact that just in the last couple of weeks, 30,000 people have applied for SHRA. That means affordable housing because they can't afford it and, and thousands of them
Courtney, are you there?
Mackenzie.
Or Mackenzie? She, the line disconnected, it hung up. So maybe something happened to her cell phone.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead and send the next caller, please, and then we'll try to.
Yeah, she still had two minutes remaining if she calls back in. Okay. Thanks.
This is the last caller and I know we have someone in chambers.
A gentleman in chambers, yeah.
Yeah. We have time. All right, I'm sorry, was that, oh, here it is. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Yes, hi everyone. Good morning. My name is Kula Tonic and I was a resident of District 3, but now I'm in Sioux Frost District and that's been a whole new thing. So Sue, I'm your constituent now, get ready. Anyway, so I, I just, I'm sitting here with my head in my hand because this grand jury report was a self-inflicted wound that I won't go back and recap because it was disheartening to say the least. But this whole thing really with the CARES Act is a microcosm of how the city and the county act when it comes to doing policy work that is centered around social justice and helping people who really need it. The county is really focused on law enforcement and is not focused on being transparent. You're focused on just doing things the way you want to do them and on bureaucracy or on window dressing really, once you're called out. That doesn't really change the way things are supposed to be done for folks who are really harmed. Supervisor Curna said, you know, in an interview recently about the grand jury report that despite many known attempts to explain what actually occurred, separate from conjecture, assumptions, and a time misguided inference, the fact remains that there's a good deal of confusion in our community concerning the serious matter of pandemic response and the use of scarce resources. But we haven't actually gotten an explanation of what happened with that money. We really haven't. And that's what the grand jury report was coming at. And honestly, I really don't expect to get a straight answer. And so I'm not going to like keep hitting my head against this wall. But what I am asking you to do, Sat County Board of Supervisors, is to stop. Stop and revise your current plan for, for spending this, this money for COVID-19 so that it is based on an equity framework, right? And not just on, because when I looked at the current spending plan, not just on who's the homie or it'll make county employees' lives easier or we've always done it this way, because that seems like the current approach. Focus is very powerful and right now y'all are not focused on equity. So you keep getting results that don't move the needle on folks who are, who are unhoused or housing insecure. Your outcomes are a product of your focus. And the community needs a board of supervisors focused on equity. And so, you know, words mean things. So let me be clear, we provided you with a, a couple of equity frameworks that you can use. So you can use the RACE count, COVID-19 State Vulnerability and Recovery Index, right? That is a tool you could use right now. You could use the California Healthy Place Index. That is a tool you could use right now, right? So instead of continuing to pay Deloitte $600,000 for consulting services on using these, these funds, instead make data-informed decisions that are based on equity. And again, we have the tools for you to do that so you don't have to start from scratch. That's what I'm asking you to do today. That's what I'm asking you to stop and instead go back to the drawing board and use these equity frameworks for how this is done, right? Be transparent about this. Have outcomes. If you give $1 million to X organization, how many people will they house? And what are the outcomes? Did they actually do what they said they were going to do, right? So have clear outcomes around these deliverables. Again, that's, that's really all I'm asking, is to use an equity-based framework for, for this $300 million so that you can actually transform the way that the county is for people who are unhoused and who are suffering. Thank you.
Thank you, Kula.
Okay, we got Ms. Mackenzie back on the line and so we're going to transfer her and it looks like another caller just popped in. All right, go ahead and start with your comments.
Hello?
Yes, is it Mackenzie?
Yeah, sorry about that. Thank you so much for calling me back, caller.
Yeah, you're welcome. Go ahead and start with your comments.
And you had, you had two minutes remaining, Mackenzie. Go.
Thank you so much, Ms. Natoli. And I'll use the beginning of those two minutes to shout out the amazing staff like Flo and everyone else who, I could get back on this call again. But yeah, I wanted to, I think I left off on talking about the 30,000 tenants that just applied for SHRA and are still in the middle of processing due to their SARA applications and are, and how thousands are at risk of eviction and how thousands are at risk of being out on the street. Programs like Project Room Key are, I mean, even those are still kind of disastrous because they are not ran well within the county and oftentimes put people in substandard conditions, but it is still getting folks off of the street. And when we're about to see a crisis of, like I said, that was 30,000 and that was two weeks ago. So when we're about to see a crisis of thousands of people possibly flooding into the street because they've been priced out of their own local housing market, I think that we need to like take 2.5 seconds to maybe stay, take a step back and realize that like often what we're doing it is harmful. Closing Project Room Key, harmful. Not continuing to give bathrooms and hand sanitizers and, and water out to encampments, harmful. The fact that we were not doing that before COVID, shameful. I also want to talk about the fact that like, what I also hope that we do is stop sweeping our unhoused neighbors. It actually doesn't, it doesn't allow for them to get connected to services because one person goes out, next week they go out to see this person, follow up, and they're gone. We actually are only causing, we're actually exacerbating the pandemic of homelessness that was already exacerbated because of the pandemic of COVID. And so I'm, I'm hoping today that the county will stop the, the action of not continuing Project Room Key. It'll stop the action of sweeps and it will begin to really address the fact that, like I said, I mean, just two weeks ago, 30,000 Sacramentoans were at risk of eviction and that means homelessness because again, they've been priced out of their local home markets. I hope y'all can take that into consideration and do some good today. Have a great day.
Okay, thank you, Mackenzie.
Okay, next caller and that's the last caller that we're transferring on the phone.
Okay, very good.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. This is Gabrielle and I am on the Elk Grove border. I'm in South Sac, in the unincorporated area. And the rise of RVs and families that are homeless and the encampments along Calvine have increased dramatically. I mean, what was 2020 a 410% increase in homelessness? I haven't seen the numbers for 2021. I 100% agree with this caller's that we have a problem. I don't agree on the solution of ARPA funding because of the strings attached. But I do agree with the, the voluminous, voluminous problem that we have. There is this whole slew of things that have led to this. You've had, with COVID, you've had early treatment closed and people haven't had access to that. You've had an uncountable amount of people that have lost their jobs because their job closed and they didn't have savings to fall back on. They were pushed into homeless. We took food to a family with an RV that was broken down and that's what the dad said. He had lost his job with all of the restrictions. He didn't have enough money to put in the gas tank to move the RV. He was at risk of getting the RV towed. It's this endless circle of county, city, and state regulations and decisions in, under the guise of public health that have created an amplification of an already giant problem in our city, never mind the people that are being bused to Sacramento from other areas. So I agree that the homeless situation is of paramount importance. I just don't agree that it needs to come from ARPA funding because of the strings attached. This is money that nobody should be touching. I agree with the pastor that the churches should be coming out more and maybe there's some kind of notice the county can send out to ask for help in that sense, to feed these people. I, I believe that we need to stop testing if people aren't symptomatic and use the money that would go towards testing and sending these mobile COVID units out and use that towards food. Use that towards jackets. Use that towards shelter. So we agree on the problem. I just disagree on the solution, but I would like this board to self-reflect on what decisions has this board made towards a virus that have helped amplify a public health crisis over here. Decisions have consequences, good and bad. So allow that to weigh into whatever decisions you guys make moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabrielle. Okay, that's our last caller. Okay. All right, we do have one other gentleman's in the chambers, off agenda, Mr. Tate, Glenn.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. My name is Glenn. I'm a resident here in Sacramento, disabled veteran. And if it wasn't for the VA, I would be sleeping in the, in the park. The VA came through for me at the last hour and I really appreciate them. The reason why I'm here, I used to be a trucker for 20 some years in the military, in the civilian world. So I've driven up, down the coast numerous of times and I see the vast amount of land that's here in California, especially here in Northern California. Now, there's a community in Southern California that was built specifically for first responders and policemen. That's the only way you can get into this, this community. You have to be one of the two. And I've been wondering, why can't the city of Sacramento take some of the money, it's just a fraction, just a fraction of that money, and build communities, buy land and build communities, not, not buildings or housing, housing? The problem is too big for that. You need a community. So why can't the city of Sacramento or the county of Sacramento take some of that money and build a community for the homeless? Build a community for homeless veterans. Why can't we do that? I mean, I've been working with the homeless now for 18 years and I used to drive for the homeless in Roseville, this place called The Gathering Inn, who helped the homeless people out. And I met a gentleman down there one day with his wife and his children. And he explained to me that he paid his rent every month, untimed, but the landlord was smoking crack and smoked up all his rent money. And now he's homeless. It was no fault of his own. And a lot of these homeless people out here, it's not, it's not their fault that they're, that they're out there on the street. Some of them, maybe, yeah, it's their fault. But the majority of these people, I believe, it's not their fault. I feel that they fell on hard times. The pandemic came around and they just lost everything. I've met people like that. I did a report once in school and it says that 80% of all homeless veterans across the United States sleep outdoors. That's a travesty for a veteran to be sleeping outdoors, for anyone to be sleeping outdoors, especially in this country. This is one of the richest countries in the world. We should not have a homeless problem here in this, this country. That's just my belief. I think it's about it. Think about, that's about it. We don't have a homeless problem here in California. We have a homeless crisis. And 2021, the homeless population grew here in California because the homeless population from back east in the Midwest are coming to California. Because you can't be homeless if you're living in New York City or Chicago. You just can't. You're going to freeze to death. So they all come out here. So I feel that problem, you know, has got to be addressed with the community for the homeless and the community for homeless veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Thank you for being with us this morning. Thanks for your comments. And thanks to all our callers and all our speakers this morning on off agenda items. That concludes our off agenda of public comments. And appreciate the thoughtfulness of all the speakers. All right, with that then, we're going to move to our consent calendar and we'll have the clerk calling the items out and then we'll go to members to see if there's some items we want to either put over till 2 o'clock or have comments on.
Okay, for your consent matters 2 through 50, for item 13, you're adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 2.09, Title II, Article 7 of the Sacramento County Code relating to the Sanitation District's Agency. And you waived reading on this on February 15th. You are also adopting an ordinance, the Sacramento County Code amending Chapter 16.04 and 16.10 relating to the adoption and amendment of 2019 California building and 2019 California residential codes provisions relating to emergency housing. And you waived reading on this one on the 15th as well. That concludes my notes.
Okay. All right, I do have some speakers on a couple of the items, but let me go to members first to my right. Any items you wish to speak to, pull up the consent calendar? My left? Okay. All right, I did have a couple of comments on a couple of items, but we'll take the speakers first. So if you'll, we have a speaker on item 19, Mr. Rodriguez.
Item 19 is the adoption of a resolution designating the city of Sacramento as the Sacramento County's state local partner with the California Arts Council and approved grant execution.
Well, I messed that one up, didn't I?
It's okay. Take your time.
I am not going to like me in death, I can tell you that. Anyway, yeah, so item 19, I guess it proposes to give what money the federal government gives us to the Sacramento city so they can give it to the arts department, is the way I understand it. Now, a year ago, I took the arts department to task because they would create all these art projects and give them, I mean, hundreds of thousands of dollars sometimes to install art projects around the city and they were unlicensed contractors. I spoke out at one of their meetings when they said we're going to give this, award this contract to a person and said, you know, it's really unlawful for you to award contracts to unlicensed contractors. And the city basically dismissed my concerns about that and even belittled me in that regard in that meeting. It's been going on for years there. They do not adhere to the law. And I told them that I would go to the state contractors license board and they said, you know, oh, there's no need for you to do that, which indicated to me that there was and I did. The state contractors license board took my complaints and they went to the city and told them that what they were doing was illegal. And the city's response was, you know, well, let's give more. And they did. They awarded two more contracts to. And they did. They awarded two more contracts to unlicensed contractors. Now, art, you know, doesn't receive any special exception in the state contractors law. You can, but you can buy all the art you want to or sell it and not have a problem. Where the city runs into a conflict is they make the artists responsible for the installation of these works. And some of them are, you know, like I say, very big projects. They involve the convention center here. They installed sculptures which are mounted, and they have, you know, cement work done and seismic footing requirements and all this sort of thing. Also, murals that they're painting, they're paying people to paint murals. You need a state contractor's painting contractor's license to do this. They just don't believe that that law applies to them. It, I don't know what else I can do. The contractors board is working its way through the complaints, and they told me that they've written letters of admonishment, and they're going to sanction the license of the contractors that are subcontracting to them because it's illegal for a licensed contractor to associate with an unlicensed contractor. So in the meantime here, the city is not happy with spending their own money doing this. They want ours. And I'm asking you to put this off until I can bring you the documentation to show that what I'm telling you here is true. I did not have enough time to do that. This notice was posted on Friday. It's, you know, Monday, and there's a weekend between that, and getting documents from the state contractors license board, a bureaucracy like that ain't easy. But I can do it, and I'd ask that, you know, and also that you give the city a chance to come here and defend themselves. I'd like to hear their tribe again, but I don't think we should partner up with these crooks.
Okay. Thank you, Davi, for your comments. And I don't know, if we have staff that could maybe just clarify, I believe this is annual submittal. It doesn't relate to arts in public places, projects, and I just, I always want to get some, maybe a brief explanation, Davi, to your comments. So is there anybody here can comment on the item? Mike?
Supervisor Natoli, I'll do my very best.
Okay, all right.
This is something of a relationship that we've had with the city of Sacramento as a result of the SMAC dissolution in 2020. There has to be some organization or commission in order to receive this money, and this is authorization for us to continue that relationship with the city of Sacramento, who then awards money to arts in the community, and we will have an opportunity to weigh in on who is selected. We've had a conversation here once before about the need to ensure that there were projects approved in unincorporated Sacramento County.
Okay. So just to the point, Mr. Rodriguez, that the, this is the conduit. Prior to 2020, the Sacramento Metropolitan Arts Commission, which was a joint organization between the city and county, was the umbrella organization. That body was dissolved by city and county action, and so the city is going to act as a conduit, and there'll be an opportunity for, it's not a large amount of money. I think the maximum amount of grant is $65,000, but it does go to arts organizations through a competitive process, and that's outlined in the staff report. And so this continues a longstanding relationship where we make application to the state of California, to the Arts Council, to receive those dollars. But we've had assurance that those projects would be, whatever they might be, they might be for education. I don't know if they're for arts in public places specifically, but I appreciate the point that he's making as it relates to actual physical instruction, but there are a lot of arts activities that aren't of the nature that you described that promote either activities and/or arts programs within the community framework. Is there a way to track that, Anne, to your point, so that Mr. Rodriguez wanted to see if that money is received, how that would be utilized?
We will, we will have, we will know where the money's being spent, and yes, we can report on that.
Okay. Okay, Davi.
I'm a little unclear. We were going to go ahead and give the money and then let them justify it later? That's what we're going to do after?
No, no, there's an agreement, Anne, if you could help here.
Yes, it is an agreement with the city of Sacramento. In order to receive funds, you have to have some sort of commission or group, and rather than having two separate ones at the county and the city, we're utilizing the city to do that. Then there will be a competitive process that people will have to apply to receive those funds. There'll be a panel of folks that review those projects for approval. Then the money will be given, and then we will track and monitor that.
I understand that. What I'm saying is these people have been acting in an unlawful manner, and we, who should be a lawful organization, should not partner with crooks like that.
Okay.
Okay?
And if you want to share further information, Davi, if you want to share further information as you gather it, certainly you can, you know, work through the clerk or through the chair's office, and again, you're always welcome as an off-agenda item, but we appreciate your comments this morning. So thanks for being here.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay. We do have some, a couple of other speakers on consent matters, items 40 and 41, Blanco Hurtado, and I believe she was going to offer the same comment for both, so we may call those items. Ma'am, clerk?
Yeah, I'm going to read them together.
Okay.
40 is the authority to execute three expenditure contracts in the total amount of $2 million from board approval through June 30, 2022, for the provision of specialty mental health outpatient services. And 41 is the retroactive authority to apply for and accept grant funds from the State of California Department of Healthcare Services in the amount of $150,000, authority to execute a retroactive revenue agreement with the state in the amount of $150,000 for the term January 3 through December 31, 2022, and authority to execute a retroactive expenditure agreement with the California Mental Health Services Authority in the amount of $113,360 for a term from January 3 through December 31, 2022, for the provision of behavioral health county and tribal planning for children and adults.
Okay. Blanco, is three minutes sufficient for both items, or do you need, do you need comments separately on both?
No, I can comment on both of them.
Okay, all right, good. So thank you for that. Okay, go ahead.
So my comment is about mental health, and I want to say thank you for funding mental health. As I sit here, I wrote something, but as I sit here and I listen to everybody discuss homelessness and the effects of homelessness, it's so related to mental health. The stress, the amount of stress that families and individuals have, just with the threat of being, not being able to pay rent, not being able to put food on the table. Anyways, I'm just going to read what I wrote. So thanks for funding mental health because with all the psychological abuse you all have participated in and continue to participate in, mental health needs as much funding as possible. And here I say, you know, I'm going to stick in here my own words, all these people who are thinking that their housing is going to go away, like, can you, you probably can't even imagine. You've never been in that situation, probably. I don't know. Anyways, vulnerable populations, including the homeless, are inundated by increased stress, anxiety, depression. The continued torture of our communities is not helping them. The last two years has had substantial adverse psychological effects, activation of fight or flight, increased stress hormones, anxiety, depression, chronic stress. Your decisions have been, excuse me, oppressive and cruel. It could even be categorized as mental torture. So thank you for funding a problem that you guys contribute to make worse.
Thank you. Blanco, you can stay up here because I know you wanted to comment on item 44, so if you want to stay, I'm going to go ahead and call item 44. So thank you for your comments on that. So item 44, she had also signed up for item 44.
Oh, sorry. 44 is the resolution authorizing continued remote teleconferencing meetings pursuant to the Ralph M. Brown Act.
Okay. Go ahead.
There is no emergency. We hosted a playoff game and the Super Bowl. An emergency doesn't last more than two years and host a Super Bowl. Everybody in this room probably watched it. I don't know why you continue this charade of an emergency when there isn't any. Thank you.
Thank you, Blanco. Okay, that's all the speakers I had on the consent calendar. I just wanted to comment on one item if I could, item 42, if we could, ma'am chair. Clerk?
Item 42 is the authority to pay an invoice from August 20, 2020, to Clean Harbors in the amount of $59.40 for medical waste removal services, and an invoice from December 2020 to FedEx Freight in the amount of $516.50 for shipping services.
Yeah, I just called this out. In my briefing yesterday, I mentioned to Anne, this, I think, is ripe for some administrative review. Obviously, there's ordinance and direction behind any late payments beyond a year that require coming before the board, but it was seen to me that there could be some vested authority for a small amount, because I've got to surmise that it took a whole lot more than $575.90 to get this item to the board supervisors to clear it. So it may be a limited amount, and it may require some ordinance changes, but it would seem to me for future facilitation, this isn't the first time, Anne. We've had some of these in the past, and clearly you're following a direction that's been authorized, directed by this board going back many, many years, but it seemed to me that maybe this amount, a limited amount, $1,000 or $2,000, where you have the delegated authority under that ordinance to pay that. If it was more than that, it could still come back to the board. So I guess I would just take this as an opportunity for us to, and you agreed you were going to take a look at it, but I wanted to make note of that today, so.
Thank you. I will work with Ms. Travis on that.
Okay, thanks. All right. Any other comments on items? I did want to also note that on the consent calendar, I intend to vote no on item 16.
Okay.
Many, many years ago, I voted no on that particular project, and I'd be consistent on that, so. All right.
So you can't make the motion?
Okay. All right, well, I think there's probably someone here who can make the motion. So with that, unless there's any other comments from board members on the consent calendar, as noted, a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar, as noted. Thank everyone for their comments. Nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote, and let the record reflect that Supervisor Natoli has recorded a no vote on item 16.
Yep. Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Before we go into the rest of the morning's business, we have one other off-agenda speaker. We had closed the item, but I know we had a little change up this morning where we're taking those very first, so out of allowance for, you know, a recent change in the approach, I'm going to take the off-agenda speaker. So Mr. Harris, please come forward.
All right, thank you. I appreciate you allowing me to speak.
You bet.
I wasn't aware of that new policy, but I can assure you I'll be here at 9:30 in the future to do so.
That's fine.
I do have an item up here.
Okay.
Like on the display, if possible. That is, I was trying to figure out why I get this treatment, and just looking through, looking at myself and wondering why I'm segregated to such treatment by the Sacramento County, and more specifically, the Department of Human Assistance. I was going through, just thinking back of some of the things that were said to me, such as you yourself, Don, when we spoke, you said I wasn't the first person to come before you with the problem from my department, and that I wouldn't be the last. To that, I'd just like to say that, oh, you guys extended the time to three minutes now, too.
Yes, go ahead.
Nice. To that, I'd just like to say that even though I'm not the first and I won't be the last, that doesn't discredit the information I have to say for myself or anyone else. Just because I'm coming up here to let you know what other people have before me, that doesn't mean that my situation was any worse, or doesn't deserve less attention just because we keep coming to you with these problems. In fact, if I'm not the first and won't be the last, that's kind of a reflection on you guys at that point, because you're now saying that we already know there's going to be more people who are going to be treated like drug-through-hell, segregated against, retaliated against. That's how I take that comment when you say that, that you won't be the last, so you know other people are going to continue to be retaliated against. Other people are going to continue to be treated differently because of the color of their skin. They're going to come before you, and you guys aren't going to do nothing about it. The reason I have this education up here is just to let you know that, you know, the things that I'm bringing to you, I put a lot of thought into them. Up here is my master's degree. I got this back in 2015. I know this is more education than some of you on this board right here in front of me, more specifically, USU Frost, which is open to everyone. Again, this is also more education than the person that you guys allowed to fire me, Ethan Dai. He runs, the director, the director of the whole department, doesn't even have this much education, you know? He, that's probably why he did the things that he did, but to remind you the things that he did, he wrote an email saying that I want to stab people at work, okay? The severity of that, I'm sure you couldn't even imagine, as none of you guys have, you know, as dark a pigmentation in your skin as I do. It's a very threatening, serious issue. Again, I just have this up here. You know, they say that the world is afraid of an educated black man. I'm walking that reality right now as I speak to you guys. And I did submit a discrimination harassment complaint. It had about 1,100 entries or more in it, and I was fired shortly after I submitted that. So I'd just really like for you guys to start doing your job and show that you care about this community.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, that concludes our off-agenda speakers and our consent calendar. Mr. Cern, you?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Just a point of order. Just wanted to acknowledge the fact that we do have representatives from Sacramento County's newly established Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, any audience. So I was going to suggest that perhaps we take the presentation of the resolution out of order in light of their time.
You bet.
Looks like you're prepared to do that.
Yep, that's what we're going to go next. So that's good, that's good. You're right on target, so.
Okay, item 54 is the present-
Sorry, it's an emergency. You guys have fired me on the 23rd. I still have not been paid. Okay? That's about two weeks. I have not been paid. I think when you terminate someone, there's a timeframe. Please give me my money.
Okay. Thanks, Ryan.
Okay.
We'll look into that. Good.
Item 54 is the presentation of resolution recognizing March 8, 2022, as International Women's Day and March 2022 as Women's History Month.
Okay, we're going to invite our guest down, and I think I'll ask County Executive Anne Edwards to join me on the presentation, and then we'll allow-
Well, good morning once again, and it's my pleasure on behalf of this board and certainly our county, and to be joined by our County Executive Anne Edwards to recognize March 8 as International Women's Day, that's today, and of course, the entire month of March 2022 as Women's History Month. And it's, I think, very notable, certainly in many ways, the contributions, obviously, that women have made throughout history, and they're making history here again today in being with us, and to recognize some of the contributions here in our community. And would just note that there's a theme for this year's Women's History Month. It's women providing healing, promoting hope, and I think that's so very appropriate, obviously, as we've, you know, over the last 24 months, worked as certainly a community and a state and a nation and throughout the world to come to grips with certainly a worldwide health pandemic, but also to maintain enormously in our lives and certainly in our families. And this is an opportunity for us to recognize certainly the women in our community, certainly our commission, and some of our commissioners are here, as Supervisor Cern said a moment ago, recognize obviously that leadership at the top post in this county is Ms. Edwards, and obviously a team of folks that throughout this community that make a difference each and every moment as it relates to quality of life and contributions in so many ways. So there's a lot to call out in the resolution, but I would just note that today is International Women's Day, as I said a moment ago, and it's a time to, I think, reflect, obviously, on our commitment to equity and to equality for women and girls in this county, and certainly to people from all walks of life and of each, of all genders. But I think particularly the focus on International Women's Day, on our women and girls here in this community. It's also time for recovery and support, certainly as I noted a moment ago, and an opportune time to work with our commission to, I think, bring a continued focus and additional focus on the development of strategies to- bring a continued focus and additional focus on the development of strategies to accelerate economic recovery and social justice for people throughout this community. And again, I want to commend certainly the folks that are behind me here, and are going to be taking the podium in just a moment. But just acknowledge that this Board, on behalf of the people of this county, has hereby proclaimed March 2022 as Women's History Month in Sacramento County. We also recognize the importance of today as International Women's Day, and further express our gratitude to the women and girls of Sacramento County for their many notable contributions, as well as their courage and sacrifices during the pandemic and throughout the history of our county, our state, nations, and our world. And so it's all signed by members of the Board and attested to by our clerk. And I'd ask Ann, if you'd like to make a couple of comments as well, and then we'll present this to our folks.
Sure. Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. And I just want to commend Erin Sebary for really spearheading getting us a women's and girls' commissions here in Sacramento County. That was a big effort and was very successful. And I want to thank Erin and the entire group of commissioners for all the work they're doing to really lift up women and girls in Sacramento County. And, you know, as a wife and a mother and a grandmother, I think this work is profoundly important. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, let me bring this back.
And so we'll actually do a quick presentation, and then I know you have some special things you want to share with us, and I think we'll all find them very fascinating. So again, with that, present this, and you bet. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, you bet. And I'll turn it over to Erin and the group here.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. This is really, we're honored, and on behalf of all of the women and girls in Sacramento County and the commission, our new commission, we're the newest women's commission in the state of California. We continue to thank you, supervisors, and thank you for joining in today's global celebration of women acknowledging the extraordinary contributions, particularly during this pandemic. I'm here today with Commissioner Tamisa Wash, who is also on the staff of WEVE, and with Commissioner Jinky Dolar, who is also represents the APIA Advocates in Sacramento County. Two of our new commissioners, you know we're a new commission, and we wanted to give you a quick update today, and hopefully every year at this time, we can update you. And I'm going to turn it over to Jinky to begin our presentation.
Good morning. Thank you. Today is a day celebrating women. But in our county this week, we are mourning. We mourn because of the tragic of life of the war we continue to perpetrate every single day, which we have seen all too much this week, directed toward women, the harms men, and ultimately, the entire community. Supervisor Desmond, thank you for holding that public meeting last night. We would like to work with you and all of you on the Board to help in the respond. We know that my sister's house, Public Family Justice Center, WEVE, and La Familia have been working all the time, all around, around the clock, to help the community. We have been working with the AAPI community and different organizations to support the family and the wife, the children, a visitation regarding the tragically killed last week as well. Our women's commissioner forges its work plan. We want to ensure all of you, addressing the domestic violence and added pressure that caused the COVID isolation, is top of our priority. Erin will be discussing our work plan. Erin, thank you.
So just to give you a very quick update, next slide, yeah, thanks. We wanted to just share with you that we're, you know, our work is just underway. We're very excited that we're forging our bylaws and our work plan. And I wanted to announce to you that we have an opportunity that's very unique, thanks to the state of California and the women's, state women's commission. They put out an RFP. Hi, I'll just take this off for a minute. They put out an RFP, they're giving away $5 million for statewide recovery and response for COVID. We put in a robust application with an extensive work plan and partnership. They came back with a little bit less. We don't have it granted yet, but we're hoping to be granted some money shortly by the state to do our capacity building. And it will also help the capacity building of our sister organization that we're building, the Friends. But I wanted to tell you that we're also, because this is Women's History Month, and because through this grant, we're going to be focusing on recovery and response for COVID, we want to do, the state is doing a kind of an overview, look on the impact of women and girls in the state of California. We want to do a similar look here in the county, help you think of responses and recovery. We're starting with a series of conversations this month, Women on Wednesdays, we're calling it, in the evenings, March 16, 23, and 30, about women on the front lines of the crisis. And we're going to end our series with women leaders, and women leaders and women organizations have been telling us that they're in a new world of hurt. Usually, they're, it's budget, you know, we need more money, we need. This time, it's about workforce. It's about women serving women. It's about women serving children and families who are themselves in pain and burdened. And as you know, our whole community is reeling, as Jinky said, and thank you again, Supervisor Desmond, and all of you for the work you're doing in response. But we have a situation now where those on the front lines of serving women, children, and families are themselves needing to be served and helped. And it's a new world. We need to imagine new responses. So we're going to be starting that conversation, Women on Wednesdays. We invite you all who are watching to join us. And then the next slide, I'll just tell you that our Friends is underway, and we look forward to having that sister organization. It's unique. Only two other jurisdictions in the state have a Friends, and we're going to set a pathway. So with that, I want to turn over, we want to present you with something today. You've presented us. Thank you so much with that lovely resolution. We will honor it, and we will honor this month and every day, really, because supporting women is supporting our communities, and it's also supporting our men. As Jinky said, our men were also hurt and injured in our entire community because of domestic violence last, in the last week. And so women's issues are all of our issues. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Tamisa.
Thanks, Erin.
Commissioner Wash, I should say.
Good morning. Good morning, good morning. The question is, how are the women and girls? And truly, it is an honor to be here today to really uplift that and celebrate that. First, I want to just thank the Women's Wisdom Art Commission, Ally Lindstein, Vicky Boyd, and the staff who spent countless and tireless hours in putting the quilts together of our women and girls. These quilts were created truly as a result of where are we at currently? And so this is the demonstration of what you'll be able to see and have here in memory and in honor of women and girls. In our next slide, truly, it's just an illustration of our concerns, our hopes, and our dreams that women and girls and their futures illustrate in this community. And then lastly, listening at the hearts of the commission, as Erin spoke so eloquently about, is about laying a strong foundation here in Sacramento, to be able, as commission, to respond and support in responding. Today, we thank you for honoring us with this resolution, and today, we would just like to represent and present to you the quilts created by women and girls, a few of those. We have so many more, but a few of the ones that just truly demonstrate where we are currently, where we are going in our future, and where we are in our communities in supporting so many other girls in this position. We launched Women's History Month. We present you with these quilts and display this month here at the Board of Supervisors and in your offices. May they be a reminder to you and to all of us that we, as women, are eager to share, and our voices be heard. We thank you so much.
Thank you, Tamika. And I know that we're, with the quilts, are making arrangements to actually hopefully have them displayed in the lobby over the course of the month, and have them secured in a way, obviously, because I want to return them, obviously, to the folks who they belong to. But again, thank you so much for bringing them here and sharing them. It might be that, I don't know, if Board members would like to take a photograph with our commissioners and with them the quilts, and maybe invite our clerk and our county executive and our county council, all who are women leading this county in many different ways, to join with us in a photo, maybe down here in the.
Okay. And I want to thank you, Mr. Chair, for your staff work to make it possible to receive these quilts today.
Big shout out to Rebecca.
Yeah, big shout out to Rebecca.
And again, the information on the listing sessions will be up on the county's website, I believe. And again, some opportunities over the course of the next several weeks to participate in those activities. So again, thank you to our commissioners. Thanks for your leadership and good work, and we look forward to displaying the quilts and sharing them with the broader community in our, in the county building here. So, thank you. Okay, with that, Madam Clerk, we'll continue to move.
Ready for item 51?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the County Service Area Number One, Zone One, Public Hearing on Benefit Category Change and Levy of Increased Service Charges for the Wildhawk subdivision.
Hi, Dorothy, good morning.
Good morning, good morning, members of the Board. And I would like to echo Chair Natoli's comments of how nice it is to be back in the board chambers and to have faces available. And so with that, the Wildhawk project is comprised of, and I'm not sliding you, Supervisor Kennedy, but we look forward to seeing your face, too. Wildhawk is comprised of 24 parcels, over 209 acres, and six subdivision maps, which are creating 1,002 single-family lots at the southwest quadrant of Gerber and Vineyard Roads. In response to a condition of approval, a request was submitted to initiate the benefit category change for County Service Area Number One, which provides street and safety light services in the unincorporated portion of the county. Due to different ownership entities, two notices and ballots were mailed on January 21. All 24 parcels are currently in the safety light category with the annual service charge of $2.56. The proposed change is to the enhanced street and safety light category. The residential rate for that category is $54.46 per parcel, and so the total generated for the project would be approximately $63,000. We do have staff from the Department of Transportation available to answer any applicable questions, but if there are no questions from the Board, we request that the Board open the public hearing, consider protests and objections, close the public hearing, and direct the clerk to tabulate the two returned protest ballots.
Okay, let me see. Any questions from Board members before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, then, I will open the public hearing, and ask if we have any folks on the phone.
We do not.
Okay. And I don't have any sign-up sheets. Anyone in the chambers wish to address item 51? All right, seeing none, then I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the clerk and to Ms. Codani.
I need a drum roll. So we have two ballots, and I'll open the first one. Okay, so this is County Service Area Number One Benefit Category Change. The legal owner is Capital Valley Investors LLC, and this is for the site address on Gerber Road, Sacramento, California, 95829. There's two parcels on this one, 122-001-0013-0000, and 122-001-0014-0000. And they are in favor of this category change. Okay, so this one, they included everything. All right. This one is also for County Service Area Number One Benefit Category Change. The legal owner is VPTM Wildhawk LB LLC. This is for the site addresses of 9850, 9940, 9942, and 9980 Gerber Road. And they are in favor. There are multiple parcel numbers on this one, and I won't read them, but it's captured in the record of the meeting material, because I know it's not cited on the agenda, but it is in the meeting material. So they are in favor, and that, that's all I have.
Okay, very good. All right, with that, then, ballots, have you been tabulated? I'll have Dorothy then read the numbers for the resolution, and then we'll consider, bring it back to the Board for any questions and/or actions. So go ahead, Dorothy.
Perfect, thank you. Section two of the resolution, at the close of the hearing, the Board had received zero written protests, which the Board finds and determines do not constitute a majority protest. Section three, at the close of the tabulation, the Board had received two protest ballots totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of benefit category, and 0% was in opposition.
Okay. All right, there we have it. I'll bring it back to the Board. Supervisor Kennedy? Okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded then to approve the resolution, noting the information that is in the record on this. And if there's nothing further, then please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item, please.
All right, the next item is County Service Area Number One, Zone One, Public Hearing on the Benefit Category Change and Levy of Increased Service Charges for APN 0370231002000.
Hello again, Board. Dorothy Codani with the County Engineering Division. And I meant it when I said I enjoyed being in the chamber so much and seeing your faces that I had to be back here for another item.
Round two, there you go.
Yes. We would like to make the Board aware that from this point forward, when there are multiple items such as this, we will be bundling it up together as a single item to increase staff efficiency and to reduce repetitiveness to the Board. We will have separate hearings, separate resolutions, and separate ballot openings, but it'll be together as one, one agenda item.
All right, we welcome you back anytime, so.
Well, thank you. The Park Place is a proposed 48-lot residential subdivision, generally located northwest of Stockton Boulevard and 47th Avenue. In response to a condition of approval, a request was submitted to initiate the benefit category change process, again, for County Service Area Number One, which provides street and safety light services in the unincorporated portion of the county. A notice and ballot was mailed to the property owner on January 21. This particular parcel is currently in the street and safety light residential category with an annual service charge of $17.88. The proposed change will be to the decorative, street and safety light category with an annual rate of $73.44 per parcel. That creates for the 48 parcels in the subdivision approximately $3,500. And again, we have Department of Transportation staff available to answer any applicable questions. And again, if there are no questions from your Board, we request that the public hearing be opened, testimony and objections and protests be considered, closing the public hearing, and directing the clerk to tabulate the protest ballot.
Okay, thank you, Dorothy. Any questions by Board members? I don't see anyone punched up. All right, with that, then, no questions at this juncture, I will open the public hearing.
No public comments?
No public comments on the phone or in chambers. Anyone here on this item? All right, seeing none, then, I'll close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, I'm, very good. You're welcome to. Is there anything? Okay, well, thank you for being here. Sorry, I didn't note it, and you're welcome back anytime as well. So very good, thanks. Okay, all right, with that, then, if no one's coming forward, we welcome our guest, and we'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to you, Madam Clerk.
We have one ballot. We have one ballot. This one, County Service Area Number One Benefit Category Change. The legal owner is Northwest Home Company Incorporated for parcel number 0370231002000. The site address is El Perizo, I hope I said that right, Avenue Sacramento, California 95824, and they are in favor.
Okay, all right, that's our ballot, tabulated, and so then I'll move to Dorothy again to read it into the resolution.
Thank you. And I specifically tried not to say that address either, because I know I would miss that.
El Perizo, is it? El Perizo?
Perizo.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll take your.
Long I, Perizo.
Exactly, yes, so I knew I was going to fluff it up, so I would. In the resolution, section two, at the close of the hearing, the board had received zero written protests, which the board finds and determines do not constitute a majority protest. Section three, at the close of the tabulation, the board had received one protest ballot, totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of benefit category, and 0% was in opposition.
Okay, again, in the resolution, in the record, and unless there's any questions, I turn to supervisors for a motion. Mr. Kennedy?
I've moved in second then to approve the resolution, and nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Dorothy. All right, that takes us to our next item for the morning, thank you.
Okay, item 53 is the Public Hearing Regarding an Addendum to the Siting Element of its Countywide Integrated Waste Management Plan, an amendment to the Countywide Integrated Waste Management Plan to add the Aerojet Consolidation Unit to the Siting Element of the Countywide Integrated Waste Management Plan. The environmental document is a final environmental impact report and addendum.
All right, good morning. David Gerdelli, how are you?
I'm doing very well, Supervisor Natoli, thank you very much. It's great to be back in the chambers. Thank you, Chair, members of the board. What you have before you is a resolution to approve an addendum to the Siting Element of the Countywide Integrated Waste Management Plan and an environmental document, an addendum to the existing previously approved EIR for that Siting Element. The Integrated Waste Management Plan has five elements, this is one of them. It was last amended in 1997, and it has undergone a five-year review since it was originally adopted. The most important thing here to, I think, to point out is that through this action, there is no new disposal capacity being created by this project, and there is no new disposal capacity being needed by this project. The two documents are addenda, meaning the existing EIR stays completely intact, and the existing Siting Element stays completely intact. What this action does is that it, in effect, legalizes Aerojet's ability to apply for a solid waste facilities permit to conduct the Aerojet Waste Consolidation Unit. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thanks, David. I would just note that up until redistricting in December, this was in District Five, it's now in District Three, so I trust you've been briefed on it, Supervisor Desmond, and do you have any questions or comments on this?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, very good, Dan. No questions or comments from board members, any member of the public sign up to speak on this?
We do not have any comments.
Okay, all right, then I'll bring it back to the board. We have the recommendations outlined in item 53, so, Mr. Desmond?
I will move approval of the resolution. Second.
Okay, so we're opening the public hearing, and we now have a motion and a second to approve the resolution and adopt the attached materials as outlined in item 53. So if there's nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Very good, thanks, David, thanks Doug for being here. Mr. Sloan was in the audience, and appreciate him being too, so, thanks Doug. All right, I think that concludes the morning's business. You actually get lunch today, an early lunch, so, trying to make up for, we do have two o'clock items, and no close session, we have close session tomorrow, is that correct?
Yes, and we reconvene at 2:15, because we allowed 15 minutes for consent item discussion, and we don't have any.
Okay, all right, so A, the county executive and our clerk get an A-plus for helping to manage it, so, we got through the speakers.
I'm the chair.
I don't know about that.
Well done.
Okay, with that then, nothing further, we're going to stand in recess until 2:15 and return back here in the chambers for the afternoon session. See you all back then. Good afternoon, want to call back into session the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for the afternoon of March 8th, 2022. And again, we're glad to be back in the chambers today, and pleased that we have folks joining us for the afternoon session. So as we get started, we'll go ahead and call the roll to reestablish a quorum, and then we'll jump into our agenda.
All right, good afternoon, Supervisors Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond?
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay, and there's a certain order to today's afternoon items, and I know that the planning department, working with the clerk's office, have that all outlined, and we'll go through those, and then there's a comprehensive action at the end of all the hearings that we'll need to take as a part of the general plan round. So with that, you want to call the first item, Madam Clerk?
Item 55 is the General Plan Amendment to Reflect Changes Made by Other Jurisdictions to the County's Land Use and Circulation Elements, and the environmental determination is exempt.
Okay, very good. And I see Mr. Smith is up at the podium, so, welcome, Todd, good to see you in person.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli, other members of the board of supervisors. You are correct, this is General Plan Round One for 2022. We have this item and the next two after that. We would ask that the board hold off on adopting the General Plan Resolution until the conclusion of the hearings on all three items. So this item, as introduced, is a General Plan Amendment to permit administrative updates to the land use and circulation elements in the general plan. By way of background, this would add new implementation measures specifically in the circulation element and the land use element that would allow us as staff to administratively make changes to the land use diagram and the transportation plan that would reflect what other incorporated cities within the county do to their own general plans. And that language is here on this slide. But just by way of background, during the 2011 General Plan Update process, staff used data from the incorporated cities within the county and included it on the land use diagram and the transportation plan as reference data. And that information on the land uses and roadways within the incorporated cities is often used in our staff's analysis of projects in the unincorporated area, especially projects within planning and environmental review and Department of Transportation. And so as other jurisdictions in the county have approved amendments to their land use diagrams and circulation diagrams and elements, the information that's currently shown on the county's land use diagram and transportation plan has become out of date. And there's currently no policy or implementation measure that's embedded in the general plan that identifies a path for us to update the land use diagram and transportation plan. And so this amendment would authorize staff to administratively make these changes. And so staff's recommendation today, which you have both bullets on the slide here, again, we want to make sure that only the first action recognizes the exempt status of the request under Section 15061B3 of the California Environmental Quality Act. We're asking you to take that action now, and then hold off on the General Plan Resolution until after the following two items. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, thanks, Todd. We'll go to board members for questions. I see Mr. Serna is punched up, so, Phil.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a point of order here, we, by statute, Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, we are, we have the opportunity to amend four times a year?
Four times a year for mandatory elements, correct.
Okay, and then, but within that limitation, we can make multiple amendments to multiple elements in a given hearing setting like this, correct?
That's correct.
And that's what we're doing today?
That is correct.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Phil. Any other questions on item 55? If you don't see any, do we have any callers, or?
No, as of right now, you just have callers for the next item.
Item 56.
Yep.
Okay. Any member of the audience didn't sign up, that might be here on item 55? I think not, okay. All right, then we can take the environmental document on this one, but then hold off on the General Plan Amendment. So we take this in two steps then, Todd?
Correct.
All right, so that would be the action, it would be item number one on the staff report that we would take up currently, and come back to the other one in a moment. You have a motion?
Do you need a motion on the environmental document? I'll move the item.
Yeah, okay. I think Supervisor Frost got the second, she was trying to get it for the first, so, we had two seconds, but Sue got it in her time. All right, with that then, this is the first part of the action, which is the environmental document, and we'll come back to the resolution in a moment. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, very good. All right, call the next item, please.
Item 56 is the Housing Element, General Plan Amendment to Update the County's Housing Element, and the environmental determination is a negative declaration.
Okay. Mr. Smith, welcome back. Just like you never left.
Seems like it does. Good afternoon again, Todd Smith, Principal Planner, Sacramento County, Long Range Planning. This item is, while the PowerPoint gets going there, is the 2021 to 2029 Housing Element. This action is actually a repeat of an action the board already took in July of last year, but I'll go through the reasons why. And so we are amending the housing element of this county general plan by incorporating additional changes that are required for certification by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. And just by way of a brief overview, the housing element is the county's plan for meeting its fair share of the regional housing need, covers the planning period of 2021 to 2029. It is one of those mandatory elements of the general plan, and ultimately will be certified by HCD. The board previously approved the General Plan Amendment for the housing element in July of 2021. We subsequently submitted the adopted housing element to HCD for their certification. We received a letter in October from HCD that required additional changes before they would certify the housing element. We have gone and made those changes in response to their comment letter. The Planning Commission met in January and recommended that the board adopt the amended housing element. And the changes before you are all encompassing, they cover the HCD's October and February 2022 letters, and then several meetings with HCD staff, as well as correspondence from Sacramento Housing Alliance, and subsequent meetings with that group. And just briefly, I want to summarize what the comments were about. So five areas of additional information were requested, and we have included them, and they are related to affirmatively furthering fair housing, the sites inventory, constraints to housing production, certain quantified objectives, and then program modifications. And so when we're talking about affirmatively furthering fair housing, the bold bullets on this slide are the areas in the housing element itself. So concentrated areas of affluence, in Chapter 11 of the element, we've added some detail on additional neighborhoods in the Arden Arcade and Carmichael Communities. Access to opportunity, we have added some analysis regarding access to transportation and associated transportation costs in various areas of the county. For the sites inventory, we have Modified Program A1, which is the county's rezone program, and that reflects a commitment to 30% of the new rezoned sites in what are the highest high and moderate resource areas. We've added a discussion of land inside of the urban policy area to meet AB 1397 inventory siting requirements. That has to do with proximity to infrastructure to ensure that those sites could be actually built. Local data and knowledge, we've added an extensive discussion that focuses on historic redlining activities, racially restrictive covenants, and the analysis of impediments to fair housing. Added some goals and actions in a new table, Table 70, I actually want to make a correction here, this is Table 71, we had a numbering issue, but a lot of additional quantification to the program objectives, some issues, strategies, and associated programs in that Table 71. And then we added to a number of programs, goals and actions, some geographic specific targets that would explicitly address housing mobility enhancement, new housing choices, and affordability in high opportunity areas, and added some place-based strategies for community revitalization and displacement protection. Moving to the sites inventory, we've added some text around default density. Around Table C25, we've amended to specify those parcels that have pending projects for affordable housing. That helps demonstrate that those projects are in the pipeline. As it relates to large sites, we've modified Program A8, consistent with HCD's comments and suggestions, to clarify all the actions that the county will be taking to facilitate development of large sites. And when I say large sites, I'm referring to parcels 10 acres or more, just for clarification. Some text in Chapter Eight and another Table C27 that clarifies inventory sites in approved master plans for affordable housing. And then we've added another table to clarify how some large sites are outside of approved master plan areas, and then further clarified all the affordability assumptions for all the large sites. And then finally, we've added discussion of phasing to each of the master plans, with additional detail for Easton and Glenboro. As you may recall, the two projects, Mather South and Newbridge, do have affordable housing strategies where they have agreed to land dedication in their first phases, respectively, and so we've clarified that. On the inventory, again, we've clarified on page 100 some texts to clarify that emergency shelter design review is non-discretionary, setting aside the shelter crisis declaration, which would nullify this in effect. As it relates to ADUs, Program E9, we've committed to ongoing compliance with state laws regarding accessory dwelling units. We're actually doing that work already, and those preliminary changes will be in the SB2 zoning code amendment package coming later this spring.
Todd, I could just ask you, while you're on that section, there was some reference that there was either a misunderstanding, or the state characterized the way we had dealt with setbacks on the side yard lots.
Right.
And I guess we portrayed it as being maybe a definition that had the same application, and they took it differently, but were there other things beyond that element that?
As far as I understand, that is the only outstanding concern from HCD. The issue was how we, in our zoning code, have side yard setbacks versus corner lots, and how we're characterizing that. We were looking at guidance issued by HCD on that very issue, and they have more recently provided a clarification. And so we have, obviously, we're committing to comply with state law, and we're making that fix in the SB2 package.
So we use their guidance, but they called us out for not following their guidance, even though we had?
That's my understanding, yes.
Well, you don't think, that's what I'm saying, that's why I read it, was that if we followed what they said, and then they said, well, that's not what we said?
Right.
Yeah, okay, very good. But now we've gotten that taken care of?
Yes, we have taken care of it.
All right, thanks.
And then finally, on this slide, we have substituted a couple of properties that were on the inventory. There has been an ongoing entitlement application on a particular site for commercial development that had an assumption of 47 units. We were able to find four substitute parcels that met the Siting criteria. They comply with the inventory requirements, and we got a verbal concurrence from HCD staff that that was acceptable. Around constraints, we have committed to removing the definition of a single household and added a definition of family that complies with state law. We've added some quantified objectives for housing units that can be constructed, rehabilitated, and conserved in a five-year timeframe. and conserved in a five-year timeframe. Program B1, which is about assisting in development, we are clarifying that the county will meet with housing developers and provide opportunities for support. Actually, a lot of these subbullets are what we do on a regular basis. This is kind of our job with SHRA as well, but we're adding that emphasis on outreach to developers for all sorts of needs groups, special needs groups, extremely low-income residents, and the like. We have a number of existing programs, particularly D1 through D8, that also address this particular comment. D8 on emergency shelters, we have amended to add the requirements that would be taken to ensure that the county's regulations are consistent with state law. This has to do with proximity from certain land uses to emergency shelters. And then finally, D15, which is project-based rental subsidies, that we have identified a preference. Again, this is a more geographic specificity topic. A preference in the RFP process for funding place-based vouchers in moderate, high, and highest resource areas while maintaining opportunities to do the same, provide subsidies in lower resource areas. All right, so Program E3, moving on to program modifications. This one, this program is the Affordable Housing Ordinance Evaluation. We are emphasizing the need to prioritize opportunities to produce housing in those moderate, high, highest resource areas, and then obviously engaging with affordable housing developers as part of that evaluation process. Program E7 is further outreach on the mortgage revenue bonds, which SHRA is committing to. This would specify that they meet with affordable developers, and then adding geographic targets and additional timing, and including a reference to extremely low-income housing as part of that program. And then finally, G1, I keep saying finally, and I'm almost there. On the analysis of impediments to fair housing, we're clarifying actions that the county will take to address the identified barriers, and those are detailed in that Table 71. So finally, the findings that staff is recommending the board take is the adoption of the 2021 to 2029 housing element will meet the requirements of California Government Code, Section 65583, which requires that the local government's general plan include a housing element that addresses the preservation, improvement, and development of housing. Second, the 2021 to 2029 housing element is consistent with the other elements of the 2030 general plan. And third, the countywide rezon program will accommodate the county's remaining lower-income regional housing needs allocation of 2,884 units. As you may recall, that was initiated by the board in October of last year, and we're beginning that process. So the recommended actions here, again, staff is recommending that the board recognize the previously adopted negative declaration as adequate and complete, and then we would ask you to hold adoption of the general plan resolution until after the next item. Any questions?
Okay, thanks, Todd. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. Thanks for the report, Todd. Just wondering whether or not the recent action the board took to finally bring up to current status the value of the commercial affordable housing fees, if that has been something that's been incorporated into the housing element, either inspired by comments from HCD or by our own initiative?
Yes, we are actually, on a side note, actively working on bringing that back for the index conversation, but yes, that's a part of the housing element as well. It's one of those activities that the county can, activities and funding sources that the county can use to increase the affordable housing supply.
Good. I thought it would be important for the state to understand that, you know, we're leaving no stone unturned here. Thank you.
Just a point, because I was looking at Page 48, and it still talks kind of in the reverse on, it says in the middle of the page, second bullet, "Review and assess its," for the county to review and assess its housing trust fund ordinance to determine if revisions or updates are needed. We did that.
We did that. We didn't want to strike it out in this version. It was something that we were doing as part of the element progress over time. So we'll be able to report that we did it.
Yeah, it's ongoing, but we modified the fee, obviously look at the ordinance from other aspects, but, okay.
It's still in there. We left it in there to show that we did something.
Yeah, we did do it, yeah. But it doesn't really say, it doesn't say we did it. It says in October 2019, says the analysis of impediments, called it out, identifies the following actions for the county. Not that we can't do it again, but it says it's for the county to do. Well, yeah, we did, but that doesn't say we did it. It says we're supposed to, that's what the analysis said we were supposed to do, which we did.
Which we did. And so when we do an annual report on the implementation of the housing element in the general plan.
Okay.
We'll note that as completed.
Okay, all right. Very good. Any other members of the board questions at this juncture? I had just one other one, Todd. I'd asked you yesterday, so how many acres are in the inventory? You go through a very detailed analysis with the attachments of every parcel that has zoning that may not, either is vacant or might be, you know, dividable into other parcels over time.
So the total acreage in the inventory is 11,760, and if we add in the rezon program, which would add another 165 acres, that would bring the grand total to 11,925 acres.
And is there any specified number of acres that we have to have, or just going to meet the unit requirement?
We need to meet the unit requirement and the acreage in order to have the inventory across multiple income levels, so low, moderate, above moderate. It's all broken down in the appendices.
And so what is our acres requirement? You just read the numbers that we have, but what is, is that the minimum?
Sure. So that's the 11,760 is the minimum, and with the rezon program, we're trying to get to a surplus.
Okay. One other thing I just wanted to call out, I know that, you know, you go through quite an extensive discussion. There's a lot of work, obviously, goes into this report. And talking about the vintage of various apportements of housing stock in the community, and there's some language in there that talks about, well, you know, once a house is 40 years old, it's, I guess, I don't want to say overstated, but there's an enhanced risk that some house can be deteriorated, and then it says at 30 years, you know, you're falling into a cautionary category. Whose call is that? Because I think one of the things that occurred to me as I was thinking about that a bit is that houses may age in place, and obviously needs to be maintained, the roofs and the plumbing and such. But just because a house is, you know, 100 years old, doesn't mean it's, you know, it may have been built at a different time, it may not have all the energy efficiencies and so forth that would, that would be built into a brand-new home. But one of the criticisms that often comes in areas where you're encouraging not just reinvestment, but redevelopment, is, you know, what's been termed gentrification, because they come in and, you know, not necessarily change the housing stock out, but people buy the housing stock up, put a lot of money into it, and yeah, it's like brand-new, but it becomes less, much less affordable to folks that are being targeted, certainly on the affordability index. And so I'm just curious about how HCD, I guess, from your perspective, how do they view that? Because, you know, that's kind of a two-edged approach to it, that you don't want deteriorated housing stock, you don't want to have substandard. On the other hand, you know, some of your moderate and more affordable for families or individuals, or folks that may, you know, come from some of the target populations here, seniors and such, you know, may be in need of, obviously, some further investment. But I'm just curious, because they use years, and I'm not so sure that's the, you know, necessarily appropriate measure, but it gives you a point in time from which to draw when housing stock was built. So I don't know if you understand the question. I don't want a detailed discussion, I'm just curious about that, because 30 or 40 years, particularly the way houses are being built, that doesn't, you know, that's probably less significant as long as the roof is kept in good repair.
Yeah, so I think there's two parts to that question, if I'm understanding correctly. One, it seems like a question about an assumption based on a certain vintage or year of construction. Obviously, the state's not out inventorying every single unit in the jurisdictions to see whether certain upgrades or certain maintenance has occurred. So it's not a perfect indicator, certainly, but it can be a starting point for, you know, obviously identifying the age of the county's residential building stock, and then digging deeper into details that we might have available locally through, you know, the building permit and inspection group to fine-tune that if necessary. I could see it certainly being a conversation on, you know, prioritizing investments in certain communities consistent with the environmental justice element. But to the second part of the question, which, if I'm understanding correctly, was could that type of investment lead to displacement or gentrification? Is that accurate?
Yeah, you know, again, there's a balance there. Maybe it's kind of a fine balance, that, you know, folks keeping the housing stock, you know, occupiable and, you know.
And good repair, safe, sanitary, et cetera.
That's one thing, but if, you know, if the idea is you come in and you, you want to see, you know, wholesale improvements, and certainly leaving the housing stock in place because they have larger yards, or has, you know, a built environment where you have walking access to existing schools and parks, and all the things that are there in that built environment, that I just think that you want folks to move, you know, to maintain the housing stock and certainly, but the affordability, if there's too much investment made, that's going to affect the ability for folks, one, to own, but even in the rental market as we see currently, it makes it very difficult and more challenging.
I'd agree with that statement in general, saying, you know, as part of our outreach on some other programs, we certainly heard concerns from the communities about gentrification, about, you know, not necessarily on the residential side, but in terms of, you know, the county's investment in certain communities, whether it's infrastructure-related or otherwise, or public amenities, that can drive up the value, which, from an economic perspective, could be a good thing, but from a displacement and affordability perspective, maybe not. So it's certainly a balance. I agree with that statement.
Okay, all right. That's all I had, so. Okay, I guess we have some, and there's no other questions. There were members, we have no one signed up to speak in the audience, so we'll go to our phones, I guess, Madam Clerk.
Okay, go ahead and transfer the first caller. I believe this is Mrs. Klinger. Hi, Mrs. Klinger, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, you can start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, Karen.
Thank you, thank you very much. I wanted to thank everyone for the hard work they've been doing through the worst troubling of times, but I have a huge concern regarding material on Pages 193, 194, that it has to do with racially or ethnically concentrated areas of poverty and concentrated areas of affluence. That brings tears to my eyes. As I grew up in the poorest neighborhood in the town that we lived, I had, I could never hold any grudge or hold any feeling that they had something more than I had. It was just a circumstance where my mother, with eight children, found ourselves. We knew we didn't have to live that way. We were ashamed to have to take welfare. So as time went, and we lost our mother when I was 14, we then had to move to California, which wasn't the worst thing in the world, because to me, San Diego was like heaven. It was so beautiful. But I'm very concerned about this, and why I believe if anybody who has any focus on this, any organization, please sign the school choice petition, which allows parents to choose or opt into any kind of an education savings account, or not any, but the education savings account, for any K through 12 student. No discrimination, and funds for each of the education savings accounts with an equal share of, we're referring to now Prop 98 education dollars. Currently, it's $14,000 that would go into their education savings account. I have to tell you, that is the most wonderful item. All they need to do is sign the petition. All they have to do is get enough signatures so it can go on the ballot. I really focus on this. It would not raise taxes, it's not supposed to raise taxes, but those funds can accumulate and also be used for college or vocational training up to the age of 30. But this, again, is very alarming to me, and it's more racist and diverse discrimination than I could ever imagine. It's horrible to do this, to divide the people. This is terrible. This is absolutely, and the federal affirmatively furthering fair housing, that, again, should never be added to the housing element. That is, again, discrimination, and that is totally dividing the people in the unincorporated and the cities in California. But also, I want to go on, if I can contain myself here. In the neighborhoods where for affirmatively furthering fair housing, it shows also areas, and this may be in one of the other designations, but it shows four areas of affluence, which is Sierra Oaks. Now, is that Sierra Oaks or Sierra Oaks? There's a huge difference, and that needs to be corrected. It also shows Willhagen, Dale Deo, Marymont, Golden Heights. None of these people are aware that they're affluent. They worked hard to get there. So did I in my area of Arden Arcade, which is Arden Park. Arden Oaks was also shown in the housing element, which was approved by the Arden Arcade CPAC. I don't see that there. West Arden Arcade is in the study area for urban renewal, which is also known as sustainable communities and complete street plans. That's also included. The maps on this were very bad. They need to be shown on one page only, blown up as high as they can with some type of street designation. I hear somebody, it sounds like they're fine, not happy with what I'm saying.
Karen, I'm going to need to ask you to conclude, if you could. Go ahead.
Yes, I can. And Ms. Natoli, it's so good to hear your voice. I just have one other thing I wanted to mention.
Okay, go ahead.
The Daily Recorder, that is a poor proof of publication. None of us get it, and I, when I checked before, you didn't get it, and I bet the other four supervisors didn't either. So I want to thank you. And lastly, Supervisor Natoli, I would like to also ask you what you would consider and what you made mention of during the general plan update to the amount of stories, housing stories on Lot Avenue, that you were so shocked that was included in the general plan update. Could you tell, was it five or was it eight stories that you were so appalled to?
I don't recall, but I do recall the conversation we had. It may have been the eight stories, I think, but.
Can I contact you?
Sure, yeah, but why don't you follow up? That'd be great, yeah.
Okay, and by the way, you have the greatest people that I've talked to, and everybody does too, but I love your gal. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Good to hear your voice as well. Thanks for weighing in.
Good to hear yours.
Okay, we'll talk to you again. Okay, thanks, bye.
Sure.
All right, send the next caller, please. And I think this is the last caller, but we'll see.
Sure.
Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Chair Natoli and Board. My name is Adrielle Coro. I am the Policy Director for the Sacramento Housing Alliance. SAK would like to thank Leanne Mueller, Christina Graybo, and Todd Smith for their responsiveness to our comments and their work to move the Sacramento County housing element into compliance with state law. This housing element is a plan for the county to address the needs of all individuals living and expected to live in the county, including individuals and families who are paid a low income. We want to urge the board to continue to support the work of planning staff to collaborate with SHA to ensure that programs to build and preserve affordable housing and affirmatively further fair housing, building affordable housing in the areas of opportunity, and making specific commitments such as adopting an inclusionary policy that calls for the actual construction of affordable housing rather than fees that are not sufficient to allow for the construction of affordable homes. Thank you.
Thanks, Adrielle. Thank you for calling in. Thank you for your correspondence as well, so, okay.
Okay, thank you. Take care.
Thank you. That concludes your public comments.
Okay, all right, I'll bring it back to the board. Todd, anything else you needed to add?
Staff has nothing to add. I just would note that the additions of text regarding to the areas of poverty, concentrated poverty, that I think the first caller was referring to.
Yes.
We are required to include that pursuant to our obligation to affirmatively further fair housing, AB 686 legislation in 2018. That guided the work that went into that analysis. So that's something we have to include. I understand the caller's point and the sensitivity around it. It's certainly a challenging topic.
She did raise a question about the neighborhoods. I think Supervisor Desmond may be able to clarify this too, but Sierra Oaks Vista versus Sierra Oaks, and there was some, I don't know how much of a breakdown there is there, but Karen did. some, I don't know how much of a breakdown there is there, but Karen did talk to that point as well. Is that?
There is a graphic. It's kind of hard to see. Admittedly, it's at the county scale, so we can certainly blow that up and.
Okay, maybe that would, that would help, then, yeah. Make sure that, if you would get, you know, maybe get a, one to scale that would be helpful. Obviously, she complimented you and the staff, so if, maybe Leanne, you could get a copy to Ms. Klinger. That would be easier to read and a little more definition behind it. So, okay, very good. All right. I don't have any board members in the queue to speak, and so unless there's any other questions, again, this one, we're going to hold off until we hear the next item and then come back and we'll take the, the action. And this is part of the package. Is that correct, Todd?
That is correct.
Okay.
Actually, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The first action, which was recognizing that previously adopted negative declaration.
Okay, yeah. I guess I was presuming you'd already, it'd already been previously adopted, but so we'll need an action on, on item number one, motion. Okay?
Second.
Okay. Goodbye, Desmond. Second by Serna, and please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, very good. All right, Mr. Pahuli, your call next item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, item 57 is a general plan amendment, community plan amendment and rezon, special development permit and design review to allow an existing commercial operation to continue operation on a .87 acre portion of an existing 2.57 acre parcel. The property is located at 1330 Elkhorn Boulevard at the southeast corner of the Elkhorn Boulevard and 14th Street intersection in the Rio Linda, Alberta community. And this is the Hickory Hanks barbecue rezon request, and the environmental determination is exempt.
And the speakers need not be sworn for this? Is that correct?
We, we do need to swear in the speakers. I, I can do that now if you don't mind.
Okay, sure, go ahead, yeah.
Let me get the statement out. You would think I would know this by heart by now, but I don't. Okay, so if you wish to address the board, I'm going to swear you in. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate response as I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God. If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay, all right. When you get to the podium, state your name for the record and the statement. I have been sworn.
And then if we have speakers, I know we had a number of petition insiders, but if we have speakers, you'll swear them in at the.
We don't have any callers right now, but the queue is open.
Okay, very good. Okay. Okay, with that then, everybody's duly sworn, and we'll go to Mr. Pahuli for the staff presentation. Go ahead.
Okay, good afternoon, Chair Natoli, board members, Chris Pahuli with Planning and Environmental Review. I'll be providing the staff presentation for this item, and as was discussed earlier at the conclusion, there are a series of voting items that we'll ask the board to consider. The item before you is a package of entitlements for a two and a half acre property located at 1330 Elkhorn Boulevard in the Rio Linda community. The requested entitlements affect the northern .87 acre portion of the property. The entitlement package includes a general plan amendment to modify the land use diagram for the portion of the property from ag rez to commercial, a community plan amendment and rezon from AR2 with an ag rez preservation area overlay to limited commercial, a special development permit to allow for multiple deviations from commercial development standards for existing improvements, and a design review. The subject property was granted a use permit from the Planning Commission in 2011 for a bed and breakfast and private social center. The commercial kitchen facility and parking lot were developed subsequent to the approval and used mainly for off-site catering. However, the bed and breakfast facility was never developed. During the pandemic, the owner began selling takeout food from the site, which was not a use covered by the use permit nor permitted in the AR2 zoning district. Staff informed the applicant that in order to legalize the takeout restaurant use, a rezon of the property to limited commercial was necessary. The graphic on this slide shows the site plan for the subject property. It is developed with a single-family residence and related accessory structures on the southern portion of the lot and a commercial kitchen and 22 space parking lot on the northern portion. The commercial facilities are accessed by a driveway on Elkhorn Boulevard and a residence from a driveway on I Street. In summarizing a few of the key points on the request, the owner has operated a catering service and associated commercial kitchen for a number of years on the property, maintains that the continued use would not cause a negative impact on surrounding properties. As I mentioned, the proposed rezon of the subject property would only apply to a portion of the property to allow for that continued commercial use. There is a rezon condition, which would limit the use of the property, that commercial portion, to a takeout restaurant and those uses approved under the 2010 use permit. The community plan amendment includes removing the ag rez preservation area overlay for that subject portion. The applicant is not proposing any changes to the existing site layout or improvements, and a rezon condition precludes additional commercial development on the site. I mentioned that a special development permit was added to the entitlement package as the existing commercial development does not meet many development standards, including front and rear setbacks, landscaping, fencing, and signage. I do want to take a moment to point out that there are conditions associated with the special development permit request. Those conditions are included in attachment two. Staff is proposing that there are some modifications to those conditions. For conditions 10 through 12, we are recommending, recommending that at the end of each of those conditions that it read to, subject to the satisfaction of the Director of the Department of Transportation. And then with conditions 13 through 21, which are standard conditions for commercial development, we are requesting that those, the balance of those 13 through 21 conditions move to advisory conditions rather than conditions of approval of the special development permit. The graphic on this slide shows the general plan, community plan and rezon changes. Again, these changes are only made to the northern portion of the property, the .87 acres. I should note that these actions will result in a split zoned property, which is allowed by the zoning code, subject to board approval. The requested entitlements have been considered by the Rio Linda, Alberta CPAC and the Planning Commission, and both are recommending approval. Should note that at both hearings, there was a considerable amount of support registered for the request and for the business from the Rio Linda community. The design review administrator also reviewed the request and recommends the board find the project in substantial compliance with design guidelines. Staff is recommending approval of the entitlement package. This slide contains staff's recommended actions. As I mentioned earlier, we'll first be asking the board to, to recognize the exempt status of the request to comply with SEQA. From there, we will be asking the board to take up the consideration of the general plan round one resolution. I did also want to note that on the, on the resolution, the first page of the resolution where it mentions Exhibit E, there is a correction to be made, where it references that the land use diagram would change from ag rez to limited commercial, that limited be struck and that it just read as commercial. So following action on the, on the resolution, then we will be asking that the board take up the balance of the entitlements for the Hickory Hanks barbecue project. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Chris. We do have supervisors in the queue. Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. Chris, I asked you this during our briefing. It's, it's less about the project than it is about the process and because there was some concern that some had of, that it took an inordinate amount of time to get to where we are for what's essentially not that difficult of a project, really, in the big scheme of things. And your reason, correct me if I'm wrong, which was understandable, is because of the item we just had prior and that, you know, because of that, as Supervisor Serna brought up, that four time a year limit, we have to lump these things together as much as possible. And unfortunately, that sometimes delays projects, but it's really difficult to avoid that. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would say that that definitely had an impact on this project. I will note that it, we went from a complete application determination to a Planning Commission hearing in about six months.
Yeah.
But there was some delay in getting here to the board, as was mentioned earlier. There was a continuance of the, of the item, and we did have to package this all together for that first round. So that, that did have a impact on project schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I did just want to, and again, I'm not going to belabor the point, but it's in the staff report, page four, Chris, and it relates to a community plan consistency, and it goes to the broader discussion. And I know I highlighted this in my briefing yesterday and expanded upon it, I'm sure enough with Ann and you, Chris, and others in the room. But, you know, it's more than two years ago that the board gave direction around looking at a rural commercial zoning ordinance, because again, Hickory Hanks isn't the only business located in a rural area that might come under similar circumstances. And I, in my conversation briefing yesterday, I stressed the imperative of this, and I recognize the planning department's labored under some pretty difficult circumstances. Certainly, it was just the, you know, a month before we went into lockdown and obviously the workload that you've all carried. But I just wanted to say, again, for the record, because by the time this probably does get to the board, I won't be seated here any longer. I think it's important, but we needed to use the process to go into the, the community planning advisory councils and spend some time talking with our ag commissioner, with our health department, certainly with you and the planning department. But there are some, you know, some opportunities with limitations that I do think could be compatible, and some of those uses exist without the benefit of the county's blessings because people don't have a pathway. When we changed the zoning code in 2015, there, there was a smaller window, I think, in the, in that zoning code. It was still very, very limited. But now there's no, there's no pathway besides what, you know, was, was pursued here, which was a general plan amendment and all the costs and expense that goes to the applicant, you know, it's by $50,000 plus to get this item to this board. And I, and I would just say that in, in the rural areas of the county, at least those that I represent, you know, changing the zoning is probably not as preferable as if you have a use permit process that allows the zoning to remain the same, so you don't have spot zoning or split zoning on people's parcels, but you have the ability to accommodate uses that might very well be compatible, that are of a family operated nature, that aren't, you know, hosting, you know, daily, you know, crowds, certainly not providing for restaurants and so forth on, on these properties. But I wanted to stress that because again, I would have hoped that while I was still here, as a member of this board, that could have provided some added benefit to that discussion. Likelihood is I won't be here, because I know there are a number of other priorities. And one of the things I've asked for, and Anne's heard this, and you too, Chris, have talked with me about this, is to maybe have a discussion before this board about what those, because there's a whole litany of things that the board has either offered direction and or asked to have come back to us in a zoning code package. This one, though, I want to stress, because again, I know that of at least one set of proprietors who were very frustrated with the county and approached certainly me and my office, you know, half a dozen years ago. And we've yet to find a pathway, if there will be one. Again, this, you know, just because you consider something doesn't mean we would ultimately do it. And so I want to express that because again, unfortunately, there are a number of business operators who either don't operate the business or choose to do it at their own risk. And I just think there's a better way to do it. And as a certainly elected representative on this board, but in representing a district that had a lot of rural areas, I think there's the ability, and we've worked over the years to find compatibility with business enterprises that certainly tie themselves back to the agricultural component, but also may lend themselves to folks who, small operators who may have small farming operations, but do, you know, catering and/or food preparation as a sideline to, you know, what they, you know, what other pursuits they have. And so I just, I guess I would encourage this, and I would, one thing I would like to see is that some discussion before this board, certainly before I leave, so we can talk about some of those things, agricultural residential areas, that I trust my colleagues. Some future data are going to have an opportunity to, to weigh in on this. But, you know, I think it just points out some of the challenges the planning department has. But again, it's an issue, and obviously, we're going to hear this one here today, and it's being recommended by the planning department. But I think there's a pathway that would be far less expensive, far less time consuming, protect the public interest, and allow for communities and neighbors to weigh in, as well as, you know, proposers to talk about limited commercial usages and maybe in a, in a very defined menu of, of opportunities and would, I think, afford people some pathway to, you know, ultimately be heard and considered for that use, assuming that they choose to go the route and do it properly. Because we have folks that just say, the county's not going to permit it, then I guess I'll figure out how I'm going to do it anyway. And I don't, I don't condone that. So, anyway, enough said, and I see Sue Frost is in the queue, so Sue.
Thank you, Chair Natoli. Chris, I just wanted to thank you personally and all the staff for, I know this has taken a while to work this out, and it was complicated. There was a long, several things that had to be dealt with. And it, you know, it's interesting because Supervisor Natoli's comments about there are other businesses, there are small rural areas where these businesses grow organically and they become part of the community, and they're like loved by the community. And Hickory Hanks is loved by the community, as we all know. So it means a lot to me and to, to everyone in the community that you've helped us figure this, you're helping us figure this out. I just have a couple of questions. You changed the wording on the DOT 10 through 12 to say what's acceptable. So does that imply that there's a little bit more flexibility moving forward to try to work through some of these things and that you're, there, it's not a hard line that you're, that you can work this through?
Yeah, it provides some additional flexibility for the applicant team to work with the Department of Transportation to work through these three conditions for the special development permit.
And will they, so once they get these, you know, they have to go and get these approvals, these permit approvals, will there be a timeline when they have to make these improvements? A specific timeline to, to make that happen? Or are you just saying you're approving what's already there and there's no other? Sorry for my ignorance, but.
Yeah, no, that, that's not what we're saying. It is saying that they need to secure these, these different permits within 120 days of the approval of the reason, which would be today's action. But there are no, there isn't a condition, or the condition doesn't specify the time period for construction. So working with the Department of Transportation, they'll be able to work that out.
Okay. And then when you change limited commercial to commercial, does that imply they have more flexibility to maybe grow in the future? Just curious.
With the, the change that was made to the, to the general plan resolution was to clarify that limited commercial is not a general plan designation. And so we changed, we made the modification to strike limited from the, from the language and just have commercial, which is the general plan designation.
Okay, thank you. Those are my only questions. Thanks again for everything, Chris.
If I could, though, but the limited commercial is a zoning designation which falls in a general plan, so the broad category is commercial. The limited commercial would be the zoning that would be applied under the.
That's correct.
Proposal.
Correct.
Thanks for clarifying.
Okay, if there's no further questions or comments by the board at this juncture, then we'll go to our applicant and his representatives. And just please, that you were sworn, and the podium is yours.
Chair Natoli, members of the board, Nick Abdis with the Thomas Law Group on behalf of Hickory Hanks, I have been sworn.
I got to tell you, it's kind of nice being back.
Good to see you.
I want to give the opportunity to Hank to, to make some statements. Obviously, today is his day. It's a big day, and it's been a long road to get here. We do appreciate all the work that staff has put into kind of a really challenging situation, but we have a positive outcome. I do want to hit on some of the questions that Supervisor Frost raised, because I think they do bear some, some clarification as we go forward in our understanding as to those conditions. But I'll, I'll touch on that in a moment. I'll let Hickory Hank make some comments, and I'll be right back.
Okay.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the board and all the other county members that have helped, helped us get to this point. It's been a really tough road for me. As you know, this came about during COVID, when there is no catering. There is, there was really no money coming in hardly to speak of and trying to keep things afloat. I've been on my property for almost 30 years now, and it's been a tough go. But I do, I'm glad to be here, and I want to thank you all for all your help, especially Sue Frost for our local supervisor and all her support.
Good, thanks.
All right, so with that, I just want to clarify that on items 10 through 12, and you probably saw some scurrying about before this item, because there did seem to be you probably saw some scurrying about before this item, because there did seem to be a little bit of disagreement on the interpretation of these, which precipitated the request for the additional language to allow the DOT director to work with us. You know, it was our understanding that, as part of this project, we are permitting what's out there today. And that is what the entitlements are for. It's not to expand uses in the future. Certainly, our preference would have been to have amended the use permit, but the zoning code does not currently allow that. So the best thing we could do is do a conditional rezone, which, you know, really confines what, even though we're limited commercial, it's that condition that really limits what we can do there. And so the idea was, it's just to permit what's out there today. And so what I want to be clear on, and what our understanding going into this, and what we need to confirm with the DOT director, is, in fact, what is out there just needs to, it's a paperwork thing. It's, we're just getting the encroachment permit. That driveway was put in by the county. We were informed that it's possible that it doesn't have an encroachment permit, but it was put in by the county when improvements were made to Elkhorn Boulevard, for example. It's not our understanding that we're putting in a new driveway. You know, as it relates to item 10, the civil, the onsite civil improvements, we're not putting in a new parking lot. The parking lot is the parking lot. If, you know, again, our understanding is that we're doing as-built, we'll do as-built drawings to provide those to the county, but we are not, you know, changing the parking lot, for example. And so, and then the same thing with the gate. We understand that the gate might need a Knox box with the fire department, but we're not replacing the gate. So a little bit of a nuanced interpretation there, and that's why the little scurrying about. But I think that, you know, with the DOT director having the authority to work this out, I'm sure we can work that out, but I wanted to get on the record what our understanding was of the situation.
That's what I was asking, because the way it's written, it almost makes you feel like there's an expectation moving forward, and those kind of improvements are very expensive. So that was the reason for my question. Thank you.
So I want to introduce Tim Verga, who's Hickory Hanks' brother, who wanted to make a comment as well.
And I was sworn in. I was with my brother here back when we went through this process to get the original use permit. And it was quite a lengthy process, and kind of strange, but we got through it. At the same point, back in 2009, when we were before the Board of Supervisors, to get the approval for the permit, this whole issue came up. It was discussed, and the board at the time decided to go with us and say that we didn't have to make all the improvements that the DOT wanted originally, which was set back the driveway, you know, curved gutter sidewalks on the street. This has never had curved gutter sidewalks, sidewalks to nowhere. All of that was decided back in 2009. When this issue came up, and the planning did their review after the initial question about whether he should be doing a takeout or not, that whole thing came up. None of that information was left in the documents. So when we went down this process, we're right back here again. In 2009, those improvements were $150,000. And that was in 2009. We told them then that it would have killed the project. And they agreed, and unfortunately, none of you were here at the time, but they agreed.
Don was.
I was.
I'm sorry. I apologize. You were here. Yeah, and we waved him. I remember.
And they made the, they made the understanding, or they proved it with the understanding they didn't need to make those changes. So, somehow, it was left out of the record. So, again, you know, my brother's been doing this for a long time. We're family in this whole Sacramento area. I don't know if you recognize the name, but probably do. And we've been here since 1918. So we've been family in this community for a lot of years. I did 30 years' service for the state of California in law enforcement. So was my family, most of my family's in law enforcement. And the rest of it is in the food service. The Vergas were having the restaurants in Sacramento, if you remember correctly. So we're not here trying to cause problems or anything of that nature, but I don't want to have to come back and say, hey, there's been a snafu, and now, all of a sudden, it's going to cost us another $150,000, $200,000 to make the changes. So I understand that Nick's worked out what's going on. We're going to give the director the ability to work with us. Just so you know, I retired as a warden at Folsom State Prison in 2013, 31 years for the state. I know how bureaucracies work, and sometimes I know how directors get stubborn. So my concern is that this doesn't turn out to be one of these things, where we have to come back to you six months, five years, trying to figure it out. So I wanted to make sure it's on record, all about this.
You were never stubborn as a warden, were you?
Yes, I was.
That's why you know. No, I know.
I was a hard hit. When you become a warden, you've got to be a hard hit. After 31 years in Folsom Prison, a maximum-security prison, you become a hard hit. So, thank you.
Thanks, Tim. I just want to get a clarification. So, because the language does talk about new construction, so I could see, again, speaking a little bit from experience here, maybe to Tim's point, that you take care of it for today, but that Hickory Hanks continues to be successful, and he needs to do an addition to the kitchen, or whatever it is, or parking lot modification. And so the conditions in here, and it goes through some level review at Department of Transportation, with a new construction, you got to pass at the board at the time, but it says new construction. So is that going to be clear for the record? Because I can tell you, I've run into this, too. It gets lost in the translation, not because the intent wasn't understood at the time. So maybe, Mike, can you help sort these out?
Supervisor, in terms of the discussion here, as Mr. Abdis signed it, it's understood that it would be the certification of the existing facilities that are out there. To your point about some future construction, we'd have to see at that point what that may or may not include, to be really clear about. I mean, I don't know if it's another access point or something else. But as it relates to the current site and the configuration of that site, this is just certifying that those things all now have the approvals, essentially. And so there's 120 days to go through that. I don't see that being a challenge at all.
Right.
I don't know about guaranteeing in the future undefined improvements.
Well, no, again, but they aren't defined. And so my point being that, and again, you've helped sort these out over the years in your capacity, where somebody comes in for a very modest addition, and guess what? Oh, now's the time, because we didn't catch it the first two times, or the board let us slide. And so, you know, with no ill intent. But, and so maybe there needs to be some clarification regarding, you know, some allowable improvements to the building itself. I'm not talking about another driveway, or, you know, going in, you know, raising the whole site and putting, you know, a 200-seat restaurant or whatever in there. I mean, that's not even allowed under the use permit itself. But so, there's a point of judgment, and I think they typically are pretty good about interpreting that. But, again, enough experience tells me that hasn't always been the case. Somebody has risen to your level in the department or higher in order to get that sorted out, because, well, here's what it says. It says new construction. You're putting on, you know, you're adding a, you know, a small addition to it, and now's the time to get it, because we may not get another opportunity. And I know that's, you know, that's the charge the staff has, make sure we have safe, you know, improvements that are put in place. But, you know, when you trigger, you know, hundreds of thousands of improvements, and I've seen it even on rural construction for homes, you know, widening some of the roads that are more than just a small arterial, and you get into, you know, widening shoulders, moving roadside ditches, and moving power poles, and on and on and on. That may not be the case here on Elkhorn. So I just, as long as you're comfortable with it, and, you know, I have confidence we are here. But, again, you know, we're all in these roles. To your point, bureaucracy lives on long after we're gone on to other things, so.
Yeah. And I appreciate that, Supervisor Natoli. I mean, our understanding, again, is that should we need to reconstruct a building, that's not new construction. Should we need to repour a driveway, that's not new construction. If we enlarge a building, we understand. I mean, we're trying to be reasonable here. I think staff wanted some limits on, you know, exactly to your point, we're not going to grow to a 200-seat restaurant. But, you know, we do need to have some ability to, you know, do ordinary repair and maintenance, but not actually grow the capacity of the operation. So, which I think we have, and I do appreciate Mr. Penrose's statement, because that's been our understanding the whole time. And so with that, I'm confident that we can have the conversation with Mr. Vacari and move on with our lives.
Okay. All right. Hank, or Tim, or Nick, anything else you want to present? I don't know that we have any callers. We had a petition, we had a number of, got a lot of fans out there that like barbecue.
Yeah. After being around for 30 years and taking care of all the people that I have, I mean, Sacramento County Airport, you know, I mean, I catered all over weddings, parties, you know, and all that. It's been, to me, it's personal. Every job's personal. It has to come out the best it can. And I really appreciate you guys doing what you're doing for me. And like my brother was saying, and Nick, you know, and even, that's why we're here today. Businesses change, because our world changes. You know, COVID come around, look what that did. You know, so that's all we're looking for, is if a need is there, that we can work with them to do what we need to do.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Hank. Thanks, Tim. Thanks, Nick. And we don't have any callers, or do we?
No, we do not have any callers at this time.
Okay. And no one in the audience that wishes to address the board? I see a couple other folks, but I think there was a group to present it. So, all right. With that, then I'll bring you back. Chris, any final comments that you need to make? And otherwise, this is back to the board for a motion. I see Phil. Oh, I'm sorry, Phil, you had a question.
Oh, I was going to make a motion.
Okay.
Understanding that the last item was one of three that are all related, and certainly that one is district-specific to Ms. Frost, I do want to make the motion that we go forward with staff's recommendation regarding the general plan amendments in all three cases.
Okay. Is that, so we don't need to act on this separately? This rolls it?
Yeah. The way that we had this laid out is to first take action on the environmental document for this, for this item, which is a notice of exemption, so recognizing the exempt status of this request.
And then come to Phil's motion.
And then come to the resolution, and then take action on the balance of entitlements.
I'll move the environmental document. Thank you, Phil.
All right. All right. Move the second, don the environmental document on item 57. Nothing further. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Were you guys waiting for me?
Yeah, of course. You're worth waiting for.
I know. You've got baby-back ribs under my head, don't you? I've got burn ends of mine, so.
Okay. Now, we have a motion by Supervisor Serna, second by Supervisor Frost. That was to adopt the general plan resolution. And then we'll need subsequent votes on the balance. Okay, all right. So the first motion is to adopt the general plan resolution. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. And then we need one subsequent action to that, which includes A, B, C, and D, approved resolution, authorizing community plan amendment, adoption of the ordinance, rezone. And it's back to Hickory Hanks again, right? This is specific?
That's correct.
So moved.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion from Supervisor Frost, second by Supervisor Serna, to move the balance of the remaining items on the Hickory Hanks rezone general plan amendment, including the community plan amendment, the rezoning condition, special development permit with findings and conditions, and the substantial compliance with design guidelines subject to findings and conditions. So, all right, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
It is done. Very good. Thank you all for being here today. Very good. Okay. That takes us through the planning items for today's session. And next to item 58, our nominations, I believe.
Yes. Item 58. I'll give you guys time to pull out your notes. You are continuing to March 22nd the Community Review Commission and the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito and Vector Control District. You are continuing to April 26th the Carmichael Recreation and Park District, Cordova Planning, excuse me, Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, County Service Area, Slough House, Wilton, Casumnas, and County Service Area 4C Delta, Elk Grove, Casumnas Cemetery District, the Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, Sacramento County Youth Commission, Sacramento Environmental Commission, Sheriff's Outreach Community Advisory Board, and the Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Your first item today is the Adult and Aging Commission.
Ma'am Clerk, can I just ask you, just before we go into the items for today, are we able to take the Community Review Commission today if we wanted to make a nomination? It just had it automatically, but we've, I'll just say, in D5, I've had resignation for the one seat that was filled, and I actually have an applicant that I'd be prepared to nominate, so that could be, the person could be appointed on 22nd. I'll still have one vacancy. And the reason I ask that question is because they're going to do some training for the review commissioners later this month, and I trust I probably won't have both of those seats filled, but I'd like to at least place a nomination.
Yeah, we can do a nomination on that one.
Okay, we can come back. I just wanted to ask you. So we'll come back to that after we do the board, the rest of the board items.
Okay. So Adult and Aging Commission?
The Chiefs of Staff recommend to continue to March 22nd.
Analog Community Planning Advisory Councils. Supervisor Frost? Nominate, let's see, I wonder if this is a typo. It says Time Verga, continue the remainder to April 12. I wonder if that should be Tim Verga? It's Tim. Okay.
Well, you can ask him. He's right out in the lobby.
Okay. And continue remainder to April 12. Okay. Art and Arcade Community Planning Advisory Councils. Supervisor Desmond?
Please reappoint Colin Suarez and continue remainder to March 22.
Okay. Assessment Appeals Board. Mr. Natoli?
Yes, yes, recommend my Chiefs of Staff likewise, continue that to March 22nd. They have an interview pending.
Okay. Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Desmond?
Please reappoint Michael Rockenstein and Gail Dax Conroy.
And so you only have two. And then Supervisor Frost?
Continue to April 26.
Yes, ma'am. Children's Coalitions?
Yes, recommendations to reappoint Heidi Kaiser or Keizer and continue the remainder to March 22nd.
Okay. Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee?
Continue to March 22nd, please. And there's an interview pending. And thanks to our Chiefs of Staff. I know they're doing, along with clerk staff, are doing a lot of interviews these days, so appreciate their effort.
You're welcome. Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council?
Please reappoint Ron Lees and continue remainder to March 22.
Human Services Coordinating Council?
Again, recommend continue to March 22nd, and interviews pending.
Okay. In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee?
Ditto. Continue to March 22nd, interviews pending.
Okay. Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board?
Yes, the recommendation is to nominate Tracy Elliott, and then continue remainder to April the 12th.
Natoma's Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Serna?
Please continue to April 12.
North Island's Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Serna?
Please continue to April 26.
And Supervisor Desmond?
Please continue to April 26.
Thank you. And Public Health Advisory Board. Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, I'm just looking at, oh, yeah, again, continue to March 22nd. Interviews are pending.
Yes. Rio Linda Alberta Community Planning Advisory Council. We'll start with Supervisor Serna?
Please continue to April 26.
And Supervisor Frost?
Reappoint Kristen McCandless and Robert Rysik.
Thank you. Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board. Supervisor Serna?
Please continue to April 12.
And Supervisor Frost?
Please continue to April 26.
Okay. Veterans Advisory Commission. We'll start with Supervisor Serna?
Please continue to April 26.
And Supervisor Kennedy?
Please continue to March 22.
March 22nd, D2. And Supervisor Desmond?
Please reappoint John Rochelle.
And Supervisor Frost?
Please continue to April 26.
Thank you. And Supervisor Kennedy, I mean, Natoli?
Continue to March 22nd. We have a pending interview. Thanks.
Yes. So Supervisor Kennedy and Natoli, you're continuing to March 22nd. And then Supervisor Serna and Frost are continuing to April 26, and we're appointing John Rochelle. And that concludes the items that are listed today. And then let's go back to the Community Review Commission. And I don't have my notes for this one, so you can walk me through.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Teresa Rivera. And then I'll come back on 22nd, obviously, but I would allow time. So at least have one seat filled for the District 5.
And the other one is the alternate seat? Or have, I'm not sure.
No, I had a resignation.
You had two?
Yeah. Each board member had two, and I think everybody's filled theirs. I was working on filling. But we had a resignation, the person moved, is moving out of the area. So we'll have at least one person, trusting we'd make the appointment on 22nd, to do the training with the remainder of the folks. So we still have one vacancy.
And continue, if you could tell me that again?
Continue that, well, continue that one until March 22nd, in the event that we're able to get some applicants. And I know there was a couple of names that were put forward, so we'll see if we're ready.
Okay. That concludes everything.
All righty. Well, thank you, Madam Clerk. So we'll go first to the county executive comments. Now, we've got seven hours before 10 o'clock, so go over. We've got seven hours before 10 o'clock, so go right ahead, so.
Well, thank you, Supervisor Natoli, and it is what I want to comment on. I really want to thank Flo and her staff, and you as well, Supervisor Natoli, for all of us working together over the last few weeks to try and do agenda management and sort of change a little, a few things about how we're doing this, to try and minimize the very lengthy day, and if today is any indication, it was a success, but Flo and her staff behind the scenes did a lot of gymnastics to make this work, so thank you, Flo and staff.
Well done.
Thank you. Thank everyone.
And we're here in the chambers with you today. You've been kind of lonely duty the last few months for you, so, and thank you, Ann, for your, I know, again, you've been very instrumental in all of this, so. Anything else you wanted to add? Okay, very good. Okay, I know we have some adjournments as well, but we'll go to just board member comments first, so we have Mr. Serna and Mr. Desmond.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. I just wanted to publicly thank Courtney and all her staff at the Elections Office. I think, as we're all well aware, there are certain candidate deadlines that are fast approaching for this election cycle, and given the fact that I'm involved in that, as are others, I've had the opportunity to be at their counter a few times in the past month or so, and I keep my ears and eyes open when I'm there, not to just, you know, focus on my business, but just kind of take stock of the customer service that is being offered to not just candidates, but the public as well, who might want to reregister because they've moved or what have you, so I just wanted to give a big shout-out to all of our election staff, and especially our registrar, so, thanks.
Thanks, Phil. Well said. Okay, Rich.
Thank you, Chair Natoli. I echo Supervisor Serna's comments, that the staff are terrific. I just want to briefly talk about the horrible, horrific incident that occurred in Arden Arcade a week ago, yesterday. Been something that, obviously, the community is really grappling with, and first, I want to thank several of my colleagues here who reached out to me and offered help and support. We've had a vigil last night. We hosted a forum that included Family Justice Center representatives, representatives from Weave, My Sister's House, the DA's office, the Sheriff's Department, all in an effort to bring the community together and maybe bring something positive as a result of this terrible tragedy in the form of helping educate folks about resources that are out there. If you're concerned for your safety, or you're the victim of domestic violence, or you know someone or suspect someone who may be experiencing abuse or violence, so I want to thank Supervisor Natoli for joining me at the forum yesterday evening, and just throw out there to the community and to everybody here, you know, please keep the Gutierrez family in your prayers as folks really try to make sense of this and heal from this terrible tragedy. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Rich. I just want to compliment you. Certainly, you were helping facilitate and basically, you know, emceeing the forum last night. One of the things that might be useful, and I don't know if you're prepared to put it out there, but in the event folks want to assist the family with any of the arrangements and so forth, I don't know if there is a campaign or a fund being put forward, and whether, who they might contact on that.
So, I'll put that out. I don't have it with me right now, but there is a GoFundMe page, and I don't have the information ahead of me, but I will get it out to all of you. Thank you, Rich.
You bet. And I just would note, I know that in addition to the folks on the panel, and certainly Supervisor Desmond and his entire staff were there, helping to greet and, you know, speak with people about some of the concerns, but you had representatives from a number of different organizations beyond those on the panel, and I know you had folks from the faith community and other residents, and I think it was very well-received, and again, a very, very tragic event in our community, and a lot of grief, but hopefully, out of that, we are able to do better for other folks in our community as well, so, anyway, thanks, Rich, for your leadership. Okay, if there's no other comments, and we have an adjournment, then I'll turn to Supervisor Kennedy. Patrick?
Thank you, Chair. Bear with me, it's not seven hours, but it's a little longer than usual.
It's okay, you go ahead, take your time.
Because this one actually cuts close to home for all of us. Forrest Williams began his career with Sacramento County as an Assistant Civil Engineer with the Sacramento Regional Water Treatment Plant in 1994. He came to Water Resources in 1997 and worked in drainage design, as well as water supply operations and maintenance. In 2000, Forrest was promoted to Associate Civil Engineer and worked in the Water Supply Planning Group, and was assigned to work on the Freeport Regional Water Project. In 2010, Forrest was promoted to Senior Civil Engineer and assumed a leadership role at the Freeport Regional Water Authority. Forrest's role with FREWA evolved over time. He was involved in early outreach and planning efforts, participated in negotiations with external partners, and helped negotiate the settlement agreements for project environmental impacts and permits. Forrest represented the Sacramento County Water Agency in negotiations of the FREWA operations agreements, and throughout the construction of the project. He then transitioned to project manager as the project came online. He served as project manager for two terms, and had just started his third term. His experience and knowledge throughout the project, from planning through construction and into operations, was invaluable to Sacramento County and FREWA, and will be sorely missed. Forrest also served Sacramento County as the manager of the Water Supply Regulatory and Conservation, which are critically important programs for the county. Forrest managed a group that ensured that Sacramento County Water Agency satisfies all regulatory requirements and track the ever-changing regulatory world of water. He was actively engaged in the state's development of aggressive conservation requirements, and took the lead in understanding financial and operations impacts to Sacramento County. He has worked with Regional Water Authority and the Association of California Water Agencies to track legislation that impacts Sacramento County operations. We, he also worked to expand and refine Sacramento County's metering program to meet regulatory requirements and ensure accurate revenue generation. Forrest has had an important role in shaping water policy and infrastructure in Sacramento County for over 25 years. His role in making FREWA, the FREWA project, a reality cannot be overstated, and we are grateful for his contributions and leadership over the years. In addition to his professional contributions, which were extensive, Forrest was an amazing person and was universally liked and respected. He was a dedicated husband to his wife, Melody, and a fantastic father to his daughters Jasmine and Ray. Forrest was actively engaged in his daughters' lives, and was a fixture at their swim meets throughout high school and into college, and anybody who met with him, you usually started with a story about his kids. Everyone who talked to Forrest for any length of time knew about his family and how proud he was of his daughters. Longtime friends and coworkers fondly remember Forrest's Gumby costume that he proudly wore on Halloween, and the amazing cookies he delivered to his coworkers each Christmas. Please join me in remembering Forrest, a fantastic human being, and honoring his contributions to our community. We will offer our most heartfelt condolences to Melody, Jasmine, and Ray, and the entire Williams family, and all who were touched by Forrest. He will be missed. Thank you, Chair.
Well, thank you, Patrick, and obviously, you did a fine job, certainly recounting his contributions, and obviously, some emotion, and I would just say that having had a chance to work with Forrest over the course of most of the 25 years that he was with the county, that he was a true gentleman, he certainly was someone who knew his profession, but he had a real knack for taking some very challenging issues, as you pointed out, negotiating the agreements on the Freeport project, where it was no small undertaking. We certainly had the assistance of county council and a lot of other folks in the county leadership team, but Forrest was on point, and I would just note that I had the chance to observe a portion of the celebration of life, and, again, just as you pointed out, Supervisor Kennedy, he was well-loved, well-respected. They had some of his fraternity brothers and other friends, and one of his daughters spoke, and you could just, you could feel sort of the emotion in the room, I don't like today, but also the love and respect, and what he meant to anyone he touched in his life, and so, I know it was very, very unexpected, and, you know, certainly this county lost a very dedicated public servant, but we lost a true friend of this community, and, again, I'm sure amongst all the grief, that the condolences here and recognizing him will go some other way to help with some of the healing, so thank you for your comments, and if anybody else wanted to add anything, again, Forrest was a, just a real gentleman, and he'll be missed. All right. If we don't have any other adjournments then today, and I guess just one final note that we'll continue with our thoughts and prayers for some of the situations in our world, this was, we talked about the tragedy in our community a few days ago, but certainly, with world events and the strain it's putting upon families and people from different walks of life, but certainly, many folks in our community are touched by the war in Ukraine and all that has come about in recent days, so thoughts and prayers with them, and we do adjourn with our thoughts and prayers and condolences to Melody and to Forrest's two daughters and to the rest of his family. We adjourn this meeting in his memory.